We are going to begin with public comment. If you would like to make a comment, just put your name and address in the chat. After public comment is over, the chat function will be turned off to allow all of us to devote our full attention to the meeting. I have invited Phil first to read his letter regarding athletics in full. After that, please remember that we allot 20 minutes total for public comment and we ask each person to limit their comments to three minutes. I will be timing the comments tonight and I will ring my bell after two and a half minutes to give you a warning if you are getting close to time up. So Phil, you are up and you are first, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to thank all of you for your hard work this summer. I know you guys can put in a ton of work, so we all appreciate it. Tonight, I'm going to read an abbreviated version of the petition that everyone on the school should have received prior to this meeting. Through this letter is the aim of the 181 signatories, which we obtained in about 48 hours, to highlight why we believe it is critical our children have the option to participate in school sports in the year that lies ahead. The MAID guidelines regarding sports carefully establish principles for a safe return to play relying on advice of public health experts. Bottom line, please let them play. With that said, we submit the following points. Sports are opt-in. This point is obvious but paramount. Parents, children, coaches and referees are making a choice to participate versus school, which is mandatory. In making this choice, they are balancing the risk of COVID exposure with the risk of a year without athletic engagement and deciding that the former is overall a healthier choice. Point two, psychological benefits. Sadly, it is our belief that the psychological slash emotional damage done to our children as a result of COVID is unprecedented, underappreciated and underdiscussed piece of the debate. While COVID statistics make daily headlines, there is far less talk of the more hidden costs of the virus: isolation, excess screen time, substance abuse and mental illness. These risks are harder to quantify but no less significant. Indeed, we are starting to observe these secondary consequences in the form of increased anxiety/depression symptoms, which are up 300% since the start of COVID for the population at large. The younger the cohort, the more susceptible they are to these conditions. According to the CDC, the 18- to 25-year-old age group, the youngest group attracts, is up 400% year-to-date and touches 40% of this demographic. Sports, as we all know, provide a significant outlet and offset some of these increased risks for students. We won't address all the health benefits of sports, given an assumed knowledge of such, but to deny kids a chance to play when deemed permissible by the state comes at an enormous cost. The deep dark winter. We need to be forward-thinking in how the academic year likely unfolds. First, any vaccine is unlikely to be available to the masses until '21. There are myriad of caveats that come with that, but using that as an optimistic base case, we need to recognize that several months from now will be exceedingly difficult to bolster the spirit and mood of students in this district. It's one thing to sit here today when the sun is out 14 hours per day and kids have the luxury of socializing outside with some degree of normalcy. The middle of January with decreased sunlight and cold temperatures, without most of the things we all look forward to for pleasure and entertainment, is likely to be devastated. Sports help offset this darkness for the 66-plus percent of students who participate. Metrics, third point. Metrics permit a safe return in the Cape Ann League. I'm not going to go into that, but as we all know, the Cape Ann League generally has good stats and Manchester and Essex in particular. Fourth point, socioeconomic skew. Students and families without financial means get the short end of the stick yet again. Pay-to-pay clubs are working within state islands and will continue to do so in the current environment. Indeed, families with means have been paying for this type of sports experience all summer, even when infection rates were higher. Given the recognized value of sports in student lives, it presents a paramount inequity if only those students whose families can afford to pay somewhere between $600 to $3,000 per season have the right to participate. Those that can pay to play will; those that can't will suffer disproportionately. It is crucial that our public school system do what it can to prevent further inequality. Point number five, summer and town sports. In general, youth sports have been successful this summer, in addition to baseball, soccer, lacrosse, flag football, basketball, both indoor and outdoor, have developed plans for the upcoming season in keeping with current guidelines. Finally, obviously, facts change and this pandemic is fluid and evolving. That said, at present, as parents, we feel the upside of allowing our children and families to choose to play outweigh the risks that currently exist. This is the stance backed by the governor, DESI and the MIAA. Please let them play, and then it's signed by 181 people. Thank you for hearing that.
Thank you, Phil. And we are going to be hearing from our athletics director and the principal of our high school later in the meeting, so I hope everybody can stick around for that. Karen Carroll also would like to make a comment. Karen, go ahead.
Okay, hi, and thank you for your time tonight and all of your hard work on this issue. I'm Karen Carroll. I'm a parent, a resident in Essex and a public health director in a nearby city, and I urge you to try to reopen these schools as quickly as possible for all of the same reasons that Phil just mentioned. For sports, academics and other social activities are equally as critical for our kids. The risks of them not being in school are well documented. The risks of disengaged learners, the socio-emotional effects, depression, we are already starting to see national and international studies that document this. At this point, where there is no community transmission, we are in the white according to the DESI and DPH maps and where community transmission is virtually non-existent, I feel it is our responsibility to try to get these children back to school as quickly as possible for all ages, but especially our youngest children. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Sorry, I was still muted. All right, does anybody else have a comment? Any of our calling people have a comment? Okay, so that's the end of our public comment segment, and we are going to go ahead and shut down the chat. And it's time for the chairman's report. I tried to keep it under three minutes, and I give some credit to my friend Teresa Whitman, who helped me write some of this down tonight because I wanted to just, I wanted to take a few minutes to make sure I recapped the process that we've been going through. So, welcome to everyone who's joining us. Thank you for being here and for caring about the process. Now that we are moving forward with a remote start to the year, I'd like to give you some insight into the order of our operations we've been dealing with, the steps that have brought us to this point. At the end of June, we received guidance that each district should undertake a feasibility study to determine what reopening plans would be possible with health and safety measures in place. We were asked to determine the viability of plans for reopening fully in-person, using a hybrid model and fully remote, and submit the findings to the state with our recommended path forward. As this took place, the district sent out a survey to assess the level of comfort parents had with sending their children back to school in-person so that we could put our efforts in the right place. Because a majority of respondents said they would feel comfortable sending their children back in-person with health and safety measures in place, we moved forward with efforts focused on a hybrid solution. At the end of July, districts learned that while the feasibility results and resulting plans still needed to be submitted, the decision for how to reopen schools would ultimately be left to local decision-makers. As such, we asked principals from the schools to prepare presentations about the proposed hybrid model. These presentations made it clear to us as a committee that while the hybrid would bring children into the school buildings for a couple of days a week, it would result in a drastically reduced delivery of curriculum and services, considerable staffing shortages and heavy financial implications. As such, we voted to begin the year in a fully remote model with in-person instruction for our highest needs students. Once the decision was made, we needed to negotiate this change in working conditions with our local teachers' union. You will hear more about this tonight. We could not begin this negotiation until we had made a decision on the model, and we could not take the next steps in planning a phased-in approach to in-person learning until the initial negotiations were complete. Now they are, and we can move forward with next steps. We will hear more about the plan and these next steps in the superintendent's report. It won't be perfect. We will have to monitor and adjust as we go along. We know that this year will look different as students are learning from different places, but please remember that we are all in this together and we need to continue to support the children as we always do. Now that we have set our course, I hope that we can work together with the Manchester and Essex communities for a successful start to the 2020 school year for all of our students. So, thank you all for being here, and we are ready to move forward with the consent Which is the warrants and the minutes from the 11th and the 18th.
So, motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will second, Erdman.
Great, we need to do all of our votes by roll call, so do we, we have Annie and Shannon. Teresa?
Hi, I was going to ask a question about something on warrant. Avi, I gave you a heads-up on this. I'm looking at the expenditure under the solar panel electric, and I thought we were going to get money back. I just wondered if you could explain what's going on there.
Sure. The way we have that arrangement working is that the company that paid to put the solar panels on the roof took, basically, allowed, it becomes our power company for the portion of energy that they generate. So, we pay them a monthly utility bill based on what we generate, and the agreement was that we paid at a fixed rate regardless of what happens with the market, and it's a fixed year, 20-year rate, and we had estimated savings from that, but also so that depending on the future rate of pathway of rates, you would either save money or at the very worst just have a hedge, which is another way of saying a fixed rate that doesn't float around if rates go in the other direction. So, the savings that you're thinking about come through the fact that we don't have escalation when rates go up, and we've also talked about the fact that as rates have gone down, we've done a lot of restructuring of our contracts. So, currently, I would say that this contract is providing a stable rate, whereas the restructuring of the other contracts, which is about 75% of our energy, have come at much lower rates. And so, those lower rates that we've locked in for about two to three years out have been part of the budgetary savings that we've been booking with the fiscal '21 budget and some of the fiscal '20 transfers. So, we pay them, they're our utility company, they provide about 24%, and they, part of the deal is, we don't have to outlay a penny for the construction costs, but we also baked into our rate or all the credits that they get from the state for the green energy that we can't get because we're not a tax-paying entity, those tax credits get reimbursed to us through the lower rate.
Okay.
Is that, it's a long answer, but that's-
No, it's okay. I just, it just, I hadn't seen them before, and I just thought we should talk through it so folks knew what was going on, but thank you for that.
Those are monthly utility bills, yep, and we will continue to get them through the 20-year term of the agreement.
Right, and this is from March through July?
Yeah, there was a little bit of backlog and billing on their part, which is unusual. Typically, the billing is more monthly.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on the warrant or the minutes? Okay, all in favor? We need to do roll call. I see Ken.
Yes.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Matt? And I'm a yes. All right, so, moving on with the subcommittee reports. Do you guys have a facilities report tonight?
We do not have a facilities report. We have a meeting next week on Tuesday.
All right, and no finance committee report, so I'll jump-
Yes, actually, we did have a finance committee. We met, we had the collaboration team met, not this past Thursday, but the Thursday before. Shannon, do you want to do this one, or do you want me to?
You do, because I don't even remember, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. And Pam and Avi, you can back up. And I don't think that's my squeaky mic, but we met with the collaborative team from Manchester and Essex, so we meet with representatives from the finance committee and the boards of selectmen and the town administrators, I would say every six weeks, to just go over things. We talked to them about the remote learning plan and also kind of what the drivers were on that. They were in support of our decision, and we told them that we would be making regular updates because the decisions we make have budget implications, and it's been made clear to us that, you know, Manchester this year did a 0% increase in their local tax rate, and we, in Essex, I think, came in at 2%, but have been asking folks to cut budgets since then. So, budgets are tight in both towns, and both towns are concerned about local receipts of taxes, so I think everybody in this call should be mindful of that. What else did we talk about? We talked about-
The lease agreement? I'm looking at my notes.
Oh, right, yeah. So, we did a one-year extension of the lease agreement, and we need to meet and hammer those things out. I think there were also some questions from Brendan Zubricki about the parity questions that we had. You know, we're going to be putting Memorial School online next year, and one of the commitments we made to folks in Essex was that the kids in Essex would have the same tools and technology that kids at Memorial School have, and I think we actually have a good story to tell about that, and I think in a future meeting, when we have time to do that, we will do so. What other things came up? We also talked about some regionalization of some services. We had a regionalization study done in both towns. They delivered those results last fall, I think, and we didn't follow up with it. I think budget season came, then COVID hit, and then there was just no follow-up. So, we had a conversation among some folks in Essex about where we see some opportunities, and Brendan Zubricki is coming up with some, he reported out and will report to his board, and then we'll follow up with that, but I think that was kind of the extent of it. Pam and Avi, did we miss anything?
The only thing we started talking about, not in any great detail, but is the planned housing development in Manchester and just kind of starting to think long-range on any implications that might have for increased enrollment and services from the school.
Okay, I know nothing. I think I had to-
You may have jumped off at that point, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll follow up with Shannon, thank you.
Thank you, Annie. I know that's a lot of work you guys do on the finance committee, and it's so important because we really try to run a tight ship over here. Okay, policy committee, Eric or Teresa, do you want to talk about the mask policy?
Teresa, do you want to go ahead? I know, I know we have the draft, so I didn't know if we read it during the meeting or-
I'm looking to Pam on this for some guidance.
Sure, we can just do an update of what the key components are, and I'm going to pose a question before I go through some of the high-level details. One question is, we typically do two reads before formalizing a policy. We certainly have time to do that before the official first day of school, but I just ask that potentially the committee suspend the two-read, vote to suspend the two-read rule and go with a single reading tonight, if they're comfortable. If not, we will certainly come back on the 15th with any edits, if they're substantial. If we're looking at wordsmithing or, you know, punctuation and spelling, nothing that changes the content of it, perhaps we could consider just putting it through tonight so we can put it into circulation.
Perhaps some commas.
Draft, 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 draft. We were working on the content piece, and this is a blend of MASC and their boilerplate policy for face coverings as well as some local adaptations. So, what I would say is, we deviate from the MASC policy because we've gone for a higher level of request, and the policy asks that all students pre-K-12 and all staff be required to wear masks when in attendance at school. And the exceptions, and we did get legal counsel to weigh in on this, the limited exceptions are for students with medical, behavioral or other challenges who are unable to wear masks or coverings. So, it's not a parental excuse in terms of my child can't wear a mask, but actually some type of identifiable disability or medical reason why it can't happen. So, there will be a process for getting that qualification. So, I think that's the key piece, and then we have gone in, and I think this was part of the MASC policy as well, define what is an appropriate mask. There's been, you know, a lot of back and forth on listervs and such, but the description here, the "fully cover the nose and secure under the chin, made with two layers of breathing material, fit snugly but comfortably against the side of the face," are the descriptors. Instead of naming any one type of mask that someone should use, it has to meet those characteristics, and then this comes from the MASC and their team, based on health authorities, neck gaiters, open chin, triangle bandanas and face coverings containing valves, mesh material or holes are not considered for appropriate face coverings. So, the expectation is that families provide students with two or more clean masks for school each day. Staff members will also be bringing their own masks, but we do have supply on hand in case, you know, a student soils their mask, forgets their mask, their kids, adults forget too. So, we have plenty on hand to make sure everyone can adhere to the policy, but we're asking that people send masks in with their children. And then, this is when we don't wear masks, mask breaks while eating or drinking. Of course, we'll have appropriate social distancing in place to do so. During physical education classes, there'll be appropriate social distancing involved there and while outside, also with social distancing. This is, I think the concern is that, you know, we have been fairly progressive in our discipline policies over the years, but there's a strong belief that this has to be enforced, and there really can't be an exception to the rule because it's something we do to ensure the safety of others. It's not necessarily a personal choice. So, if we are having issues with compliance, we're going to reserve the right through this policy to remove someone from the school building for in-person learning. So, we do have a small contingent starting in-person learning on the 16th, so this policy would go out to them. We have made it formally known to staff that they are expected to wear masks when they're in the building, and they will be adhering to that with or without this policy in place. So, that's a rundown of the basics. Happy to take questions. This was a team effort. Allison and Avi assisted with this, along with Teresa and Eric, and MASC was our guide with legal counsel weighing in. So, we feel like it covers the bases and meets muster in terms of legal expectations.
I have a quick question, Pam. This is Teresa. For the new people, like me and anyone listening who doesn't know the process for a policy adoption or change, just let us know, like, the first grade, second grade, a vote discussion, what's the process?
So, usually, on a brand-new policy, we'll bring it forth, there'll be some committee work, then we'll bring it forth. The committee as a whole will weigh in, we'll go back, make any substantive changes, perhaps do some tinkering with the language or editing if somebody picks up, you know, we've got two different fonts in this, for example, little things like that, and then bring it back to make sure substantive changes are agreed to by the body as a whole. In reality, we probably established the policy of two reads before we had a subcommittee doing work and the whole committee would do it, and I can imagine that the whole committee doing policy work probably wasn't particularly efficient. So, in the past, we've done it a couple of different ways, so I think there is room. When we completely redid the policy manual back in '11, everybody got it for a single read, and because we used primarily MASC-vetted policy language, it was just kind of passed in total. When we do amendments, they typically come through once with a language change, and like I just said, if we're doing brand-new policies, we usually take two passes at them. So, it's true, it's up to the committee to determine whether or not they want, would like us to go back and make some substantive changes and then bring it back to them one more time.
Can I speak-
It's not external rule that governs it, it's our own set of rules.
Can I speak to the two reads and the value of that? Often, policies have an impact on families and students, and so it's important for, you know, if we have a first read, that folks have a chance to weigh in at the next meeting. So, I don't want to stop that, but I do think that it's reasonable to adopt this policy tonight, and I'd like to make a motion to do so.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion?
A minor piece, Sarah, and this is, I appreciate the work that's gone into, and I just, as long as everyone's comfortable, there's policy and then there's procedure, so this appears to be comprehensive, so any procedure that we have in individual schools will just point to this. I just worry about when we make policy, if we do have to tweak it as governance or things change. I also am in favor of kind of the one read. We should be able to, we may need to adapt and change as we go forward. I guess, was there any sort of discussion that you're making about the level of detail being too much or just right?
I'm fine with it, but I'm like, shenanigans table, so any more discussion is welcome if people have questions or comments.
I'm comfortable with the level of detail primarily because I saw the process. Allison Collins had, you know, great input and concerns in, you know, changing the wording, taking into consideration, you know, preschool teachers' input and the different level of input, so I'm comfortable with that.
Perfect, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that tire got kicked as you went through. Thank you. So, I'm fine with going forward and supporting it.
Any other questions or comments from school committee? All right, all in favor, we need to do everything by roll call. Annie?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes too. Policy adopted.
Great, thanks. I know the implementers at the building level, our principals, will be happy to have this in place so they can start working it into their materials for parents and staff because they're gearing up for the three days with students on 11, 14 and 15. So, thank you, I appreciate getting this done tonight.
So, negotiation team, that's Ken and myself. We spent many hours in negotiations over the last couple of weeks. Ken, do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I guess I will. I just wanted to emphasize the process. This was one of my first times in a negotiation with this group, and we did spend many hours on it, and I really appreciated it. I thought if I described this to the school committee as a whole and the audience, I'd describe it as everybody was very candid, very open. It was almost one of these tough but fair negotiations or discussions where everybody said their piece, everybody respected the other area, and we definitely ranged in detail from 30,000 feet up down into the nuts and bolts. And I guess what that led me to conclude from the process was that we really, I think, worked to have everybody there kind of confident that their voice was heard, that they're working together, and it just really reminded me that that's an important part of how the district has operated, of having everybody on the team working together to kind of put our students and children first and get the education that we need to get to. So, other than that, I guess I'll defer to Pam, probably has the best, Pam may add more in her report, but I thought the process was good. I thought it was, and I know we're, I suspect we've got a lot more ground to cover as we continue to move forward, but I really appreciate what everybody brought to it. That was my report. Thank you.
Sarah, did you want to add anything?
No, I mean, I'd just like to echo everything that Ken said. It's great, it's great to be part of the process. It's a lot of work, and I think we all work together very collaboratively and definitely with the children first in mind all the time, and we are ready to hear from you.
So, I'll just, I'll run down the top, the top-level points. So, it's an agreement that goes through October and can be renewed unless we need to make changes to our learning plan status. I think, I would say the majority of the time was spent on working out details in two key areas, our three key areas. One, the health and safety of the building, so the- One, the health and safety of the building, so the HVAC and ventilation systems, and ensuring that the third party review is completed and the building's got a clean bill of health and/or we had an actionable checklist that could be completed in a timely way to ensure the buildings met the guidelines and standards set forth by the state. In a little bit, Jason Waldron and Avi or Urbis are going to update you on what that looks like and what the details are. The good news is we are well on our way. Obviously with two newer buildings, the list was not as extensive as some of our colleagues around the state. And we were able to, I think we are well on our way to having that list completed in a timely way for when the kids come in and to a level of comfort for the association. So that box we checked. Obviously, a big part of the discussion had to do with the differentiation in responsibilities for different staff members. So we're beginning the year with in-person instruction for special education. So we needed to reconcile the various working conditions for those two groups and come up with some rules of the road for what the expectations would be in terms of health, safety, everything from PPE to hours of the day, size of the groups that teachers would meet with and the supports that would be available to them. It was just a lot to think through and a lot to process and codify, but that was successful. And we're, we are on course to open up on the 16th with some in-person programs. I think Allison will share with you some of the challenges we're seeing. And I think it's a good, it's a good test case for our later move to hybrid at the early elementary. And we're learning a lot from the process and trying to figure out how we may tackle these problems when we move from a 35 to 50 student cohort to a 200 student cohort. So working conditions for in-person teachers, working conditions for teachers who are teaching remotely. You've heard us talk at the meeting throughout the summer about FMLA, ADA and FMLA. I call, I call it the COVID rider, but it's FF-CRA, so childcare, childcare COVID rules that have been added to the FMLA process. So anyway, we came up with a, a system and agreed upon application of those guidelines to allowing accommodations for workers while we're in remote, which will expire when we move to hybrid and then we'll have to rework them again. So essentially, we have, we've been talking about the fact that we have 20 plus percent of the staff who qualifies for one, one of those categories of leave request. Under remote learning, we can make accommodations and allow some, as long as their primary function isn't being in person with the students, an accommodation can be made to work remotely. So we're trying to work through that process now with our open cases and set people up according to meeting the federal standard to qualify for leave. And then the other piece we worked through was a step in process for staff through the month of September. The expectation is everyone who can will be working from their classrooms. We decided that as a, as a group, and it was ratified, that we would start with a minimum of three days a week for people at the beginning of the year, building to the four days a week, which will be the standard when we move to hybrid in October. I think some of the thinking there, and Sarah and Ken, check me on this, was that it would give some people a little bit of time to get their house in order and also adjust to different schedules and deal with some of the fear and concern about returning to the building. I don't know if you wanted further commentary on that. I think that's all the highlights that, I know we spent a lot of time at the table, but I think those are the three basic categories that we, we work through.
Yeah, I would just add that it's four days a week because the buildings are going to be closed one day a week.
Yes.
Cleaning, so four days a week is the day that the buildings are open.
Yep.
And I think kind of my pop psychology hierarchy of needs, we definitely are back at the, I appreciate that we're starting from the personal safety and security working through. And there's a lot of new behaviors that everybody is, that a lot of folks are learning in terms of being in a workplace with people from outside the pod, wearing face masks, keeping distance. So there's a lot of new norms that we're getting in for staff and students as well. So everybody is, again, it was good discussion. Everybody was, was up for the challenge and I was thrilled to kind of hear the breadth, the depth and breadth of which the teachers and everybody was engaging. We're really looking forward to every, it must be, it must feel good, Pam and the principals to kind of be back connected and running again.
Yes.
Thank you.
So are we speaking to the agreement? Is that what we're doing right now?
We're just giving an overview and if you have questions, sure. And then you will take your final vote on it.
Right. So, I mean, I, I, I'm always frustrated because I want to edit these things. And there's just a lot of editing that could happen here. But, um, and it, but I always, I know that it's already kind of too late. They've, they've already reviewed it. So I would love to see this.
Annie, are you talking punctuation?
Not just punctuate, I mean punctuation matters. I know that you guys, I mean, ridiculous, but it does matter. There's stuff here that, commas, commas are your friend. So anyway, I think it's a really good agreement. I'm so glad that you guys were able to hammer this out and that we're on our way to, you know, beginning the school year strong. And so I want to thank all the folks at MITA. They, they did a great job pulling this together. And I want to thank the, the negotiation team for doing this as well. It's a lot of work and I know it was a lot of time, so much appreciated.
I have one question. Oh, my voice is coming through Annie's mic. That this agreement is a public document, but just so that everybody knows that personal teacher information is not public, that's private information. That's all.
Can I just make a comment on this? I think it's important to note that there is a ton of collaboration that always goes on in these kind of situations, especially in this district. And I think it speaks a lot to the trust that each party has for the other side. And, you know, we're seeing all this nonsense on the news about what's going on with other districts and teachers and some of the actions they're taking. That hasn't happened here. And I think that speaks to the level of trust and collaboration. So I think that's really important for people to understand. These teachers wanted to go back, so we just had to find, you know, the parameters in which, to make it safe and less fearful. They want to be back with the kids and I think that's the most important thing. And the numbers on this vote show that, so thank you to the negotiation team. Thank you to the teachers. Thank you to MITA. This was a huge first step, so it's great. Thank you.
Yeah, I would also say that just everybody at that table, 100% has the kids. The kids are the most important thing. We're all there thinking about the kids. We're there, we're there because of the kids. The teachers are there because of the kids. We want to make this the best possible we can for their education and for their social, social, oh my God, I can't talk tonight. Emotional development. We know how important all of these issues are and we're working to make it the best year we can. So are we ready to make, have a motion to approve this document?
Kelly, if I can move that on the, yeah, Warnock moves.
Hey, a second?
Second.
Eric seconds. In favor in roll call, Annie? Annie's not talking to us right now. Teresa?
Yes.
Sorry.
Annie, are you a yes? Yes, she is. Eric, Eric made the motion. Nat?
Yes.
And Shannon?
Yes.
And myself, I'm also a yes. Okay, awesome.
Awesome.
Great. So Pam, do you?
Okay, so we are going to get the reopening updates in different buckets tonight. I'm actually going to go last and I'm going to deal with a couple of technical pieces and some next steps so that, some discussion about the indicators and how we might want to start thinking about transitioning to hybrid and when we'll know it's time. So that's kind of a discussion for us to have. And I have a couple of updates on some, on remote learning, a secondary remote learning option for parents who may be more interested in an asynchronous model. And also, we're going to talk a little bit about homeschooling and who to contact. And that'll be followed up with an email with some details. But ahead of it, I think the work of the MOA that we just outlined really allowed the whole team to start to kick everything into gear from the beginning of the year. And I know principals, starting end of last week, started back with that, back to school communication that you typically see that starts to outline the beginning of the year and how to be prepared. Staff were back on, back on campus, either virtually or in-person on Monday. And a couple of buildings today, we had elections at the middle high school, so that building was closed. But things are starting to get cranking in more of a traditional way and you're starting to feel that excitement about the beginning of the year. So we thought tonight, what we'd like to do is just kind of outline what those September in-person gatherings are going to be like for you, so you can hear what the schools have planned. Allison will give us an update on the special ed planning for our launch for in-person education with that, with that small group on September 16th. Julie Riley is going to take you through the training that teachers are being put through this week in a little bit more detail than we've covered in the past. And as I mentioned before, Jason and Avi will talk to you about the HVAC systems and safety preparations. That's becoming more of a public, more public discussion this week with some of the job actions that we're seeing around the state. So we just want to make sure the public knows in case they have concern where our buildings stand. Then also, this is all part of reopening the fall athletics planning update with Tricia and Jordan. And then I'll just cap it off with next steps. So I'm going to ask, I have them in alphabetical order. It might make sense to do elementary, then middle and high. So if Jen Roberts, if you want to go first for Essex, then we'll go with John, then we'll go middle and high school after that. That might make sense.
Great, thanks Pam. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yep, okay. So thanks for having us here tonight. As Pam said, we're actually really excited to get going. It feels like the summer that didn't end with all the, you know, the discussion about this, that. And finally, we're all back in the building, at least most of us, I would say. We still have some staff working remotely, but, so we're excited to talk to you a little bit about tonight. So some of what I want to real quickly share, it's not actually in-person, but it's teacher to family contact. So I just want to clarify that so that you're not wondering why I'm sharing a few things with you. But, so basically, Thursday, September 10th, at 3:30, we are going to do our kindergarten parent orientation that normally would have taken place last May in-person. And we, you know, we have our whole routine down that we've been doing for years that we've kind of improved upon over time. So we're going to take a new twist. And at 3:30, we're going to be orienting families to kindergarten under this remote model and we're going to do it through Zoom. So my kindergarten teachers have been amazing, taking the lead on this. And we're excited, we're still in the preparing phase, getting all, all our ducks in a row, but that is on Thursday at 3:30. Friday, September 11th. Oh, it's weird when you say that date out loud. On paper, it looks different than when you say it. Grades one through five will be zooming, which is a new word in our lingo, with parents as a whole class group. So it'll be all the adults in the classroom. And the opportunity, the reason for this is to give them an opportunity to sort of understand what remote learning is going to look like for their children and kind of give them some of the background so that they sort of feel confident that they've got this, whether it be a parent who's going to do the support at home or whether they, you know, have a babysitter or they, some people are in pods or whatever. We want to be able to share sort of what that's going to look like for them. So that's going to happen by grade level. We mapped it out over the course of the day. So if people have a couple of children at the elementary level, they're not going to have all the same times. So we have scheduled that. Teachers are communicating that to families. I've communicated that to families. Monday and Tuesday, which are the 14th and 15th, we're actually going to do our kindergarten screening, which also would have taken place last May. So we're going to do that outside. We actually had a number of staff sort of donate canopies, we call them, outside. They're going to do it, if you're familiar with the property, there's the horseshoe, but then there's that grassy area out in the front of the school. We're going to set that up and try to, you know, make sure we have all the social distancing, you know, considerations taken into place. And what they're going to do is have stations set up. And we'll do the fairly typical screening that would take place, you know, back in May, where students are sort of assessed in a variety of areas. But what we decided to do this year is make one of the stations actually the meet your teacher station. So the teacher is not going to do screening, which they would have done back in May. But this is a way for these young students to actually get to meet their teacher in person and spend a little time with them. So the teachers are setting up all these schedules. Everything's being done through signup genius and all these great tools that we have. So parents are given some choices in times and signing up for what will work for them. And at that time for kindergarten, they were also pick up their materials, all their learning resources, the iPads that'll go out. We're still working on all of this, putting all these pieces of the puzzle together. So that will happen at that time. On Monday, September 14th, all of the classes will be set up somewhere outside, still working on the map. I need Tricia Puglisi to help me because she likes doing this kind of stuff. And we're going to set folks up outside. We were looking for donations of canopies for anybody that would help us. So far, that's not playing out, so I'm going to really hope for a nice day. Otherwise, we might have to go to Plan B, but fingers crossed, we're still working that aspect out. And what we're going to do is bring in, so picture all the teachers set up outside in their different spaces. And over the course of the day, families are going to sign up. They're going to bring in two to three students at a time and they're going to meet with them for 30 minutes. So the purpose of this meeting is to do a little team building, you know, introduce them to a couple of classmates, meet your teacher and, you know, and they're coming up with their own team building kind of activities. We didn't want to dictate that. And also pick up their supplies and materials and their technology. So we're trying to weave some of this in because this is tricky for families to be juggling all of this. So that will happen on the 14th over the course of the day in 30-minute increments. And teachers are setting that schedule up as we speak. On September 15th, teachers are going to meet with individual families and they're going to do this either via Zoom or telephone calls. And it really depends on what they work out with different families and their comfort level or where they might be. So this will take place, maybe a 15, 20 minute phone conversation or Zoom meeting. And the purpose is one, to kind of form that homeschool connection. You know, I'm your teacher, meet the parents and the children. And also to maybe gather some information about your child, have a quick conversation. There's some key questions that they want people to think about for their discussion. Sort of like, how's your summer gone? Is there anything you want me to know, that type of thing? If parents would rather not divulge all of that in that type of meeting, they are then asked to email the teacher directly so that if there's some other things they want to talk about. And some teachers are actually choosing to do this over the course of the next two weeks. So if there are parents listening and they might have gotten a phone call today or a Zoom meeting. So we're using the 15th as that dedicated time, but some folks were anxious to kind of get going. So if that's their choice, they certainly are encouraged to do that. So teachers are setting that up. So we've worked really hard on this. This was all through our implementation team at the school level, which was a group of 10 volunteers that I can't even thank enough for how they've kept me, kept me moving forward. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And if not, I will mute myself. Okay.
No, I have a couple of questions. Shocking, sorry. So quick question on the, on the parent or caregiver Zoom to set those expectations together. Is that when families are planning, are going to receive what the day is going to look like for their specific class? Or are they going to be receiving that by email beforehand with their teacher?
So teachers are gearing up to be sending out all that stuff now. They've been working on it. We, we had, technology wise, it's interesting. You think you're all set to go with something and things need to be all populated in our database, Aspen, to have all that stuff happen. And, you know, we got a lot of moving parts. So I, I personally thought we were going to send some of that out today. It might be tomorrow. But the teachers are also working on their own websites to have parents access like a parent portal, but also a student side. So we took a lot of the feedback that we've gotten from families over the last six months and said, you got to find a way to streamline this so it's not all over the map for us to manage. So that's the training the teachers have been getting this week. And it's a lot to take in and figure out, but they're diligently working on it. So all of that stuff, parents will have a schedule, they'll have all this stuff and it'll either be coming out over the course of this week, sort of dribs and drabs gradually from specific teachers, or it can get talked about also on that, on that event. or it can get talked about also on that, on that event, if you will.
Okay, so, no, from a parent perspective and other parents that have a similar concern, the information about the daily class schedule is a top priority for families right now who are trying to make decisions about what kind of caregiving, what kind of pods, what, what choices, you know, do they need to look at asynchronous models and what those things do? So that's, that's a top priority that I would ask, that that might go out as soon as it can.
I can, I can, I can let the teachers know, that would be helpful. If they're not ready for anything else, if they could at least get that up. And just so you know, like, you know, we've had the infrastructure of the schedule ready. There was a little reluctance to go public with it because we were still working out some nuances, because we also have to fill in special education services. So where the reluctance comes in is once that goes out, now you have to, which actually, last week, we had to fix something. Because you start plugging in all these other things, you say, oh gosh, we need to switch this. Had we sent that out to families, that would have been a little bit of a fiasco. So some of the reservation about doing that is more making sure we've got it buttoned up before it goes out.
And I love that, thank you. What is a reasonable timeframe to say confidently, probably by the end of this week? Or, like, what is a reasonable timeframe for parents to look toward?
I think that is reasonable, but I cannot promise you that. But I'm going to make the best effort, and I'm going to talk to teachers. I want to make sure we are just locked in, so that, like I said, this thing that happened last week, I didn't expect it, but I was so grateful we hadn't sent them out yet. So that's where my reluctance comes from. Once something goes out and then you have to change it, it causes a whole, a lot of other things to happen.
Would it be fair to say, though, for planning purposes, one should plan for the school day?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, that, I think the concerns I'm getting are more, oh, am I, are more that people want to know what their school day is going to look like, so they can assess what level of screen time their child is actually engaging in and that sort of thing. There are decisions being made at family levels right now that will impact down the line, that that information is kind of crucial for.
Right, I'm not sure, what I just heard you say, I'm not sure that's actually what you're going to get. You're going to get is almost like, if you think back when we were back in our typical world, the teacher would have a infrastructure of a schedule posted, like on their website, or however, you know, they were doing that. And it'll show, like, you know, here's the language arts block, here's where you have PE. It's that type of the schedule, it's not going to be like screen time here, no screen time there. So I'm not sure if that's, if I'm answering you correctly.
Oh, maybe not then, okay. So at what point is it reasonable for parents to be able to, and I'm not saying it has to be rushed, I'm just asking, what is a reasonable timeframe for parents to have an idea of what their child's school day actually will look like? I mean, I know that they have to be available 8:55 to, to, you know, or 8:25 to 2:55, but, but in terms of within that, some parents definitely want to know, especially for the small kids, okay, well, they're doing screen time for this big chunk up here, and then they have a 15-minute break, and people want to know to that level of detail.
So I, I, you know, if you think of what a typical school day is and how a teacher teaches, that's not ever something they're going to be able to define for you in that sort of explicit way, because depending on the lesson and what they're teaching, what they're doing, there's going to be very variable, moving pieces of that. So, you know, I'm sure teachers can give you the gist of what's going to happen, but it's not like you can have a schedule that says screen time and not screen time, or, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question correctly.
Yeah, Jen, I think I'm getting how the two inter, the two questions intersect, which is, because I was watching the, the, the parent training videos that are going to get put up sometime in the next couple of days, and the schedule that, it's a block schedule, right? So there's going to be the art block, there's going to be the English block, but within that, there isn't going to be a set amount of X minutes of screen time to X minutes of independent time. And I would think, I'm rusty on my classroom, and I'm certainly not an elementary expert, that's going to vary on day-to-day based on what the activities are, what the direct lesson may be, or what some of the questions may be coming from the students. Is that fair to say, Jen, that that's going to be a ever-evolving?
Yeah, because the trick-
Changing thing.
Absolutely, so you said it correctly. The training that the teachers are in right now is like improving remote pedagogy. So what they're learning is how to take what they do very well live in the classroom and, and sort of flip that into a remote model. So if you ask that question, like, take the screen time out of the equation, you know, how much direct instruction are you going to give my kid, and then how many minutes are they going to work independently? That's a really tight thing to ask a teacher to tell you, because it's going to vary based on the students, it's going to vary based on assessment information they get, going to vary on the type of a lesson, if they feel like they might have to pull back a little and do something differently. So I don't think, if, if that's an expectation, I, I don't think we're going to be able to meet that. I think what parents do need to know is the timeframe of the day, here's the schedule, and the, the teachers are going to drive that bus. So I think you've got to let the teachers do that. So I don't, I don't know if, I, I mean, I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in if I'm not speaking correctly about this.
Well, I think you're answering my question, but in, in, I guess it's just very different than what I had anticipated receiving for information, and I think that, so what I'm hearing you say is that plan for teacher-led instruction through the entire day, through direct, through, through the computer?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's the answer I need, so I can share with, with others, okay.
Right, but let me, I want to clarify, because I'm, I'm just worried that we're saying the same thing, but maybe it's, I, it's like the semantics, but teacher, the teachers are going to lead instruction all day. That does not mean that they might say to students, like, they're going to put them in a breakout room for 20 minutes and let them work independently, or they're going to let them, you know, have some quiet time to process and do some problem solving. So the notion of screen time, not screen time, that's not really what's at play here. It's how they're going to do their best teaching. So it's going to vary by subject, by points in the day, the students in front of them, what their needs are. So I would never want to pigeonhole a teacher that way. I think that would be a very dangerous thing to do.
I have a quick question, and then I have a comment-
Okay.
-about the procedures of this meeting. So my quick question is, just to clarify, would you say that the, I think people are worried that, that it's going to be staring at the screen all day. So do you think that, are the teachers planning a variety of activities so that children will be using paper and pencil and crayons and doing art activities and other things when they're not just looking at their screen throughout the day?
Absolutely, I mean, this is what we're doing PD on right now. So depending on the developmental level of the students, you know, we had a conversation today that, you know, the, the new, the math curriculum is online, the new wonders, which we're, you haven't learned about, but we're going to, has online components. And the teachers are going to have to find ways, sort of based on the developmental level of the kids, to decide, is this something that they're okay with them doing on the screen? Or is this when they want to release them for a little bit to work independently with a paper and a pencil, and then take a picture on Seesaw and share it? So this is what the teachers are learning, but they need a little bit of autonomy to sort of make these decisions and figure out what's best for their students.
I think another really important point for the people listening in on the call to hear, if they haven't had a chance to think about this as much as some of us have, is that when we do pivot to the hybrid model, the instruction's going to look pretty similar, because the teachers are going to be teaching to the students at home, as well as the students in the classroom. And so I know that they've been planning for this for a long time, and I'm, I know that they're going to do a great job, but it's definitely not going to be a typical year, right? So we just all have to plan for that.
Right.
Okay, so my procedural thing is, usually we try to wait until the end of a presentation to ask questions, so we don't get bogged down, and Jennifer did such a great job answering all those questions, but could we let the other principals all speak? And then we'll have more questions at the end of the principal presentation?
Oh, sorry, Sarah, I didn't-
No, no, that's totally fine, and you were awesome answering all those questions.
I didn't know, maybe I chimed in too fast, so my apologies if I did.
No, you did great, thank you.
Okay, I think I'm up next, this is John, how are you? I feel like I owe Jenna coffee, because she, she just did half of my presentation, so I could say ditto to a lot of what, what Jen just said. But just to kind of give everybody a recap and an outlook for Memorial School in terms of communication transitioning to this new model, this new environment, and the in-person pieces that were, that were currently scheduling, and then ones that we're thinking about for the future. So at this point, placement letters have gone out to all families. So we kind of worked through that process, doing it virtually. So instead of mailing letters out, we did mail merge with an email blast out through Aspen. So a few little glitches, because it was the first time we did it, but overall, it was very efficient. Everybody kind of got them at the same time, which was great. Right now, teachers kind of have the steering wheel in terms of communication. We're giving them some time to reach out to the families, to start to open those lines of communication, start to build relationships with parents and students. So at this point, they have made their initial connection or outreach to parents, sharing what the, the daily schedule will look like, so people should have a good idea of kind of what the day will look like, what the week will look like, excuse me. And, you know, to echo what Jen said, e, e, even though it's an 8:25 to 2:55 schedule, I guess we, you know, we probably can't say it enough. That does not mean that kids will be glued to the screen that entire time. They will go off and do independent work and group work, and they may leave their Zoom room open, but just step away from it, or they may close their computer down completely, depending on the, the grade. There's some logistical things based on, on the age of the students there in terms of, do we want them to log off entirely, or just, you know, kind of maybe move to the other side of the table? But they will be kind of on and off, depending on the lesson, the topic, the way the kids are responding to it. Teaching is a science, but it's also an art, and so we want to make sure that we give our artists that freedom to be able to adapt and adjust based on the students that they have in front of them. Excuse me, so coming up soon will be kindergarten screening. So similar to what Essex is doing, we will have on the 16th and 17th, kindergarten students will come in, you know, two, probably two at a time for kindergarten screening in-person. We'll do it outdoors, we've set up a few outdoor classroom spaces, so to speak, where that can be conducted by staff. We're also working on a parent video series. So these are videos about what to expect overall, so a video from me, it's kind of explaining the schedule, explaining kind of the art of the teaching that will, will happen within each lesson, what, what they can expect in terms of what a typical, typical lesson and typical day might look like for their student. But then also a parent tutorial for our K-2 families on Seesaw, which will be the online platform for submitting work and communicating back and forth with the teacher. So it's actually one of our teachers, Katrin Frisky, doing a Screencastify, kind of just walking parents through. So like, as a parent, when you are working with your child in the Seesaw platform, this is what you'll see, this is where you can go for this information, that information, that sort of thing, just kind of the layout and the logistics. And then also another video that Deana Flood did, a, another Screencastify for Google Classroom for parents, so kind of explaining again how we're, you know, the consistent way that we're going to set up Google Classroom in terms of, you know, assignments and where to turn things in and that sort of thing. And then the in-person opportunities that we have scheduled right now, so it's September 11th, 14th and 15th, we have three outdoor classroom spaces, as I mentioned. So one of them, we've called out, just happens to be right outside my office window. And so we mounted, actually today, a whiteboard on the wall. We have, we're going to paint socially-distanced circles on the ground. We'll have a table out there for the teachers, so they can set up whatever technology they need. We'll have the, we'll have folding chairs that we can bring out to put into, in the circles, so that there could be kind of a outdoor classroom socially-distanced space for the students to come with their, with their parents, to get to know their teacher, get to know kind of the routines of, of the school year, do some team-building and get-to-know-you activities. So that's one location. Another location that the teachers can reserve is our reading garden in front of the school. So we're kind of modifying that a little bit to provide social distance seating options. We also installed the whiteboard out there, so we, we've turned that into a, after our teaching space as well. And then also the tennis courts. So some teachers have opted to sign out the tennis court area. And again, parents will come in with their students in groups of three to five to, you know, to get, get to know the teacher and the classroom expectations. But then also, they'll receive their MRSD tote. So every student will get a tote, tote bag when they come in for orientation, and the teachers will put the students' math journals and art supplies and all those hands-on materials that they're going to use throughout the day, along with their district-assigned device. So K-2 will get an iPad, 3 through 5 will get a Chromebook. So the, the parents and their students will head off after orientation with all of the things that they need from the school to access the remote learning from a technological standpoint, but then also all of the tangible materials that they'll need for the hands-on work. And some things that we are kind of in the developmental stages of. So our School Adjustment Council, Laura Carlson, is working on some student outreach, outreach for new students. We have about 20 or 25 new students this year, which is, which is a lot. So she is starting to do some person-to-person outreach to them, and then plan some in-person orientation for them as well. There's also some talk about doing some in-person counseling for certain, for certain students, certain situations. And then also, we're working on a plan to do in-person K-1 RTI screening with some of our universal screening measures. Our reading specialists feel like they'll get a, a more accurate read if we can do that in-person. So we're, we're kind of working out the logistics on, on that end of things. But so as of now, that's kind of where we are and we're heading, and trying to, you know, plan for the remote, but then also try to get the kids in for some in-person connections as well.
Sarah, I didn't know if you were talking or if you were muted, but I guess if we're all set, we'll go to Joanne next?
Yeah, I think we're, we're hosting questions till the ends of all the principals.
Great.
Okay, hi, hi, everybody, how are you? Happy Tuesday. So I'll go through this, and then I'm happy to answer your questions at the end. And then if you're getting questions from the community after this, I really encourage you to send them directly to me. That way you guys can, I'm sure it's overwhelming right now, the amount of questions and concerns and communication you're getting from the community. And if you get school-based questions, send them my way. That way you guys can worry about policy, and we can worry about our schools, and hopefully everybody will have consistent, clear answers from us. So I'll answer some of the questions that were asked at the end. But we are super excited, really excited to, we're planning these meet-and-greet days. I've got a small committee working on it, and we're working in collaboration with the high school, because ours will happen in the morning, and the high schools will happen in the afternoon. We have the sixth grade coming in on the 11th, and that's about 108 kids coming in. We're hoping for 100% attendance, we shall see. Some families have already reached out, saying they may not be comfortable sending their students, and that's also fine. So it'll be clearly delineated traffic patterns, directing students down to the football field. We will have approximately 10 stations set up down there on the field, socially-distanced stations. And teachers will be down there and ready and waiting. It will be a fun, upbeat environment, we'll have music playing, we'll have welcome signs, and really letting the kids see how happy we are to be seeing them, and how happy we are to have them on campus. And hopefully, you know, filling them with a little bit of insight, excitement about the school year, even though, you know, we'll all be in masks and things, but we're going to try to offset some of that energy. And students will come down, we'll direct them to stations where they will sit in socially-distanced groups. Each teacher will be at a station to start, and teachers will introduce themselves, talk a little bit about their content, and then they will engage kids in a project-adventure activity, where they will get up and they'll move, and they'll, they'll do some fun engagement things. And then each station will end with an SEL activity, and we'll be introducing that to kids in a very concrete way, to say to them, look, we know this is different, we know this is stressful, we know that there are going to be days at home when you're feeling stressed or anxious or depressed, and we want to make sure that you learn some strategies to help yourself manage that. And they will be introduced to a very quick, brief SEL tool, something as simple as, you know, we're about to move stations, but before I leave you, I want you to look around and count, and I'm just making this up, these aren't the exact ones, but look around and count every shade of green you can see right now. So you do that, we'll transition, and you'll, or you're about to meet another teacher. And then that teacher will leave, and the next teacher will come to the station, greet the kids, how are you, and then say, so, you were just counting the shades of green, and let me remind you why you're doing that, and how this is helpful for you. And you're going to learn a lot of tools today, and we will revisit those tools in Advisor Block, and we'll introduce you to some new ones as the years, as the year goes by. So those rotations will happen about 15 minutes at every station. And then when we're done, each teacher will take their group of students up to tables that will be spread across, spread out and, you know, divided alphabetically. Students will go to the tables and get their Manchester Essex bag of materials. And in the bag will be textbooks, Chromebooks, planners, folders with lots of information- materials. And in the bag will be textbooks, Chromebooks, planners, folders with lots of information for them, schedules and things like that. Schedules will be in the sixth graders' bags. Seventh and eighth graders know how to access the schedules via Aspen. I will be sending out an email slash video information on the ninth to all families to talk about the day, the, you know, the activity. So the eleventh for the sixth graders, the fourteenth for the seventh graders, that's about a hundred and twenty kids, and then the fifteenth will be the eighth graders, about a hundred and thirty kids. So an email, a video will come out from, from me, from me, from me. I have this information in it so that parents aren't expected to absorb it all from one email. It'll be a reference point for them to be able to go to later. Just a little bit about advisory. So every school day will end with a fifteen-minute advisory block from two fifteen to two thirty. We're making the groups as small as we can. Right now, they range anywhere from ten to thirteen students, and we may have a couple more participants, so we may be able to get them a little bit smaller. I'll have an advisory group. Dean of Students, Kim Provo, will have an advisory group. Every parent will get an email from the, their student's advisor on the tenth. So they'll get information from me on the ninth, an email from their advisor on the tenth, explaining what advisory is and how to, how to operate within it for kids. And then every day, kids will meet with those advisor groups. And they're multi-grade. We did that so that we could make the groups as small as possible. We also did that because we don't necessarily want grade-level advisors with the grade-level students because we don't want it to be a question-and-answer session. So we actually don't want the adults to always know the answer to those questions because we want them to be able to model for them, you know, critical thinking. Well, hmm, you know, I don't know that answer, but what do you think you would need to do to find that answer? Who would you need to talk to? How would you do that? Would you send them an email? Would you wait till advisor group to do it? Do any of the older kids in the group have any suggestions? So we're really looking for a way to model critical thinking, model problem solving, have the older kids be able to lead, and the younger kids be able to learn from, or vice versa. You know, there's a lot of old souls out there, and some of our sixth graders might have something to teach our, our seventh and eighth graders. And schedules, Teresa, you had asked about schedules. The sixth graders will get a paper copy of their schedules in the folder on the meet and greet day. The schedule can be somewhat overwhelming to the sixth graders because they're, they're used to the elementary environment where they're mostly in one classroom. And the, the middle school schedule is a six-day schedule. It's a waterfall and a drop, and it can be a little overwhelming for them. So we really need to take them through that. And the sixth grade team is working together to determine how they're going to do that. Yeah, that's, yep, that's a high school one. So they'll take, typically, they do it in person, and they give the kids a blank schedule, and they have them write out their schedule as a way to concretely help them internalize what it is. And they may be doing something like that. Actually, the team leader and Kim Provo and I were going back on email a little bit today to determine how we're going to do that. But we are going to, in a slow, methodic way, help the sixth graders understand their schedules. There'll also be some information in there on how to access Aspen. I'll do a video tutorial on how to join a Google Classroom. So, and we'll build as we go. You know, this is new. John Willis actually said, and I've been quoting him a lot lately. He said several weeks or months ago now that it's like first year for everyone. I certainly feel like a first year principal in a lot of ways. This feels like a brand-new job in terms of some of the tasks that I need to do and the things I need to think about. And we're not going to get it right, right away. We're not going to be perfect out of the gate. There are going to be some areas where we're going to learn from our mistakes, but we'll be flexible and hopefully very responsive to those mistakes and learn from them. So we'll take it as it comes. And if I have to, if I have to add new information to the website, or we have to add new material or whatever it is, we'll be sure to keep you all updated as we go. But we're doing our very best right now to make it as tight as we can. But we don't know what we don't know yet, so we'll find out what that is. So I think that's about everything from the middle school perspective, and then I'm happy to answer questions. Oh, on the stations. So the students will be sitting in stations. They're going to stay put, and the teachers will rotate. That will minimize contact. It'll minimize cross-traffic and minimize aerosol distribution and all those things. So the teachers will rotate through the stations. Yeah, Pam's got the schedule up there. I'll go through the schedule in a video with everybody and explain it. But essentially, it's forty-five-minute blocks, instructional blocks, fifteen-minute transition periods. So at the very least, students will be getting a fifteen-minute transition, excuse me, fifteen-minute screen break between every class. But again, as Jennifer said, this week, teachers are learning a lot on remote teaching, pedagogy, how to incorporate screen breaks into your instruction, how to incorporate hands-on activities. I modeled it a little bit yesterday at a faculty meeting. And I just, you know, want to tell you, teachers are, they're very excited this week, really happy to be getting back into it and to be doing something in a direction that's very clear for them. And there's a lot of collaboration going on and a lot of shared ideas. And even my previously tech-phobic teachers are surprising me with their level of enthusiasm and their willingness to take a risk and try new things with the technology. So I'm really very, very pleased with what I see happening this week.
Awesome. Thank you.
Joanne just gave me a really good jumping off point, and that was the idea that teachers are really excited about what we're doing with the PD and really being collaborative, you know, learning so much. And they're really excited. And they're trying to figure it all out, and they have these ten days to do that, and that's really great for them. So in terms of the high school, in terms of orientation, I would go back to emails that were sent out to each level class last week. Certainly, the freshmen are different from the juniors or the sophomores or the seniors, and we really want to orient them to the high school. We typically do that through our peer mentor program. And our peer mentors will be presenting a virtual welcome to the freshman class sometime next week. And they will also be meeting with those students periodically throughout the year, virtually within either their English or their biology classes. They'll pop in and do question-and-answer sessions, which we have found have been really helpful to kids over the last two years. We also have opened up our schedules to students, and we really ask that if there's a question about a schedule, that students use the Go Book Me to book a appointment with their school counselor so that they can just figure things out. Generally, in the spring, we have an opportunity for counselors to meet with students, to figure out their schedules. We didn't have that this year, so we're kind of doing it all right now in this two-week time period before the start of school. And also, we've asked parents, please, if there's something that's gone on with your family in the last six months that might impact your, your student's ability to really engage in school as we come back this fall, to reach out to the guidance counselor and provide them with that information. And as needed, the guidance counselor will reach out to the teachers to let them know what might be going on with the student that might be hindering their ability to fully engage. And then we can address that and kind of figure out how to best serve the student. In terms of our orientation, it's going to be very similar to the middle school. We're going to start with class meetings like we would typically in a typical school year. We bring all the kids together, and we have a class meeting where the administration talks to them, their class advisors talk to them, their class officers talk to them, and we really kind of set the tone for the year. And we will start that way. And then we will send them department to department to kind of be able to have an opportunity to see their teachers, meet them, and then also pick up their materials. Different from the other levels, the materials they're picking up are very different. It could be keyboards, it could be cameras, it could be books, it could be art supplies, it could be science lab supplies. So it's kind of a big undertaking, and, but we really want to have the kids to have the resources at home. They need to have, to be able to have on, hands-on learning. And so we have gotten tote bags, I think we've talked about that before, for kids to put all their supplies in. I'm not sure the tote bag is going to be able to hold everything that a high school student's going to bring home. So they might want to bring a backpack as well because just the number of hands-on things that students use is pretty enormous. And I think the last thing I would want to say is that our goal is to provide a typical school day and school year for all students. Like, we're looking at this school year as we're going back to school. This is school. We go to school from eight to two thirty. We run our periods. We have extra help during U Block, and it is teaching and learning, but just in a different platform. And that's our goal.
Thank you, Tricia. Okay, now that we've heard from all the principals, are there questions and comments from the school committee?
I had just a quick sort of random question. I think, I can't remember, did Jen mention she had twenty new students? I'm wondering what the principals are seeing in terms of new enrollments across the board. That's something we haven't talked about. And since it's been brought up, we, we explore it a little bit. I'm curious to, to learn what you guys are all seeing.
Shannon, I can, I can speak to that. I think, I think I mentioned we have twenty to twenty-five. It's roughly new students at Memorial, but there's definitely an ebb and flow. We're, we're having a hard time even keeping up with just processing the number of students that are unenrolling. So either homeschool or private school. We were, we were saying today that we have a lot of compassion for the private schools right now that are probably scrambling to add staff with the number of students that are coming in. And then when we do pivot back to hybrid, or pivot to hybrid, I assume that a lot of those students will come back. So, but there, there's kind of been a, a big kind of ebb and flow, many new coming in and, and then many going out as well, more than ever, obviously.
At the middle school, in a typical summer, it's anywhere from five to ten move-ins, and we're currently at eight. And we've had a variety of requests for information for parents who may be leaving the district, but many aren't leaving the district. But we do, I don't know the exact number. We do have a few that are, are transferring out to private schools specifically.
At the high school, we do have a few new move-ins. Our biggest question is, we had a really high number of students accepted to Essex Tech, which we think is awesome because in the past, we may have only had two or three, and this year was more like fifteen. We're just uncertain of the number of students who are actually choosing to go to the tech. And we really ask parents, if they are going to withdraw their child to go to the tech, that they complete the withdrawal process with the high school.
Again, at Essex, I'll piggyback on what John said. We're trying really hard to keep up with it because it is so fluid. We have not had, I don't know what, John, what did you say, twenty-five move-ins? I'd venture a guess, but don't quote me. I think we've had maybe seven, one as recently as yesterday. But the, the homeschool and the, some of the private school, and then some people who are still somewhat undecided. We're trying to keep a running list, but it's, it's a lot to keep up with because some folks will inquire, but then we never hear back. And so we're not sure where they stand in that process. So we're trying to keep track, but it's, it's been, it's been, you know, really fluid.
Can I ask Pam and Avi when we'll have some more certainty on all of those numbers?
Sure. I'm looking for, I have a report. Shelley keeps the residency and enrollment file. I think she sent it to me back at the beginning of August, and it looked like a fairly typical summer. We won't have the outgoing until they actually execute the land, and then we do our survey. But we will be able to pull an unenrollment or withdrawal report. So probably, we could probably pull one for you for next meeting if that is of interest to you.
Just as a data point, I'd like to see that.
Yep, yep.
May I ask a couple of questions? So I think what I'm hearing from all of you is that you would like parents to address questions first to the classroom teacher if they're not getting an answer, to escalate it to the building principal. And I just hope that on our, in our communications out to folks, we tell them, how do we, how do, how do they best communicate and ask questions? What can be, what can be expectations for a response?
Yeah, Annie, that'll be one of the things in my materials pickup, that flip bag is the flow chart of who to communicate with and for what purpose.
I see some really cute kids on some of these screens. Hi.
Any other, Annie, did you have more questions?
No, I think this is a lot of work, and I appreciate all of you guys trying to just herd cats and get it all together. I know that we, a couple of us are starting to work on the FAQs and hope to have some of that up for people as well. But, you know, it seems like there is just a lot of fluidity here, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing. And I'm really glad to hear that people are going to be seeing their teachers and making those connections because it's important for kids, but it's also important for the teachers. They, you know, they build really great connections with these kids, and it's important.
Annie, can I add what popped up while I think one of the other principals was talking? So when we're talking about materials pickup, this is not like for a long extended period of time. If you can only imagine, the teachers are trying to gather what they believe the students will need maybe for the next few weeks. And then as we start moving forward, then we're going to have to reassess that. And there might have to be, almost like back in the spring where we were doing the drive-through kind of thing where we have to give you more stuff. So I just don't want any parent to be thinking like, I just got everything I need for a very long period of time. Because it's really tricky for a teacher to try to wrap their brain around, like, you know, six weeks from now, what a student might. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Sarah, can I just ask a question? No, I don't, actually, it's not even a question, but Jen, while you're there too, I just wanted to close the loop on, on the line of questioning I had earlier and just say thank you for your answers to that. Some of it was even clarified in the other principals' presentations, which is a lesson to, to follow the protocol. Thanks, Sarah. But just to say that, that that's a reminder to me too that, that I don't even know what I don't know yet as a parent in this. And so, you know, many of us as elementary parents right now, or at least many that I've spoken with, we had this kind of expectation that we'd be receiving a schedule of, well, here's when the, you know, breaks are, and here's that thing. And so it's a good reminder to us to remember that the teachers are working on that right now, that that's what these ten days are about. That wasn't already in place. And so to be flexible with that is helpful and know that they are learning that right now, what are the best practices and actively doing that. And I just have to say that all of this in-person stuff sounds really great. It sounds like an enormous amount of work, and it sounds really wonderful. So thank you.
I agree with what Teresa said. Does any other school committee member have a question or comment for the principals?
Yeah, this is, this is kind of, I really, I wanted to speak up, wanted to say thank you for the work. I'm going to echo what Annie said around how making sure that we have a clear path for feedback for parents to understand or guardians, how it goes through. Like I said, also like to say, there's going to be a lot of learning, and I really appreciate it, as Teresa said, hearing what I didn't hear from one person. I picked up the next. But I guess I just want to really emphasize the need, especially since we're remote, we're not going to have a, those big jam-packed back-to-school nights this year that we had in the past. If anything, we can do anything to err on the side of over-communication. There have been requests, for instance, for people to say, hey, don't just send me out the email blast, but give me a spot where I can go and get the, here's what's going on, and here's what I need to. I'm sure you've got all that covered. But again, coming out of negotiations, there's really a lot of, I realize the power of having everybody in the district pulling together. And I'm just looking forward to seeing how we can continue to do that kind of collectively for, for principals. How do we, what are the best practices to really quickly evolve it? So thank you all for what you're doing.
I think the good news is principals are personality. We do this work because we thrive on change and chaos a little bit. So in some respects, we're in our wheelhouse. So we're
So we're, you know, that's not to say we're not freaking out, but we're, we're doing it. We're handling it okay. But thanks so much for the positive feedback. It helps.
Yeah, I think you're.
And keep, I just have to say one thing, keep bringing the rest of us along, because I heard from uniformly from just about every parent, let me know what I can do to help. And while that help can be overwhelming, as you get more organized, again, feel free to ask and reach out for that. That's been great.
Okay. Anyone else with questions for the principals? All right. Thank you all so much. I know this is a ton of work, and it's really exciting to hear about getting the school year off to a start, even though it's going to look different from other years. I think we're, I'm starting to get that back-to-school energy feeling, so it's pretty exciting. And moving on, I think we have Allison Collins up next.
Hi, everybody. Just a really quick check-in on special education. As you know, we've been engaging in a process of prioritizing students for in-person instruction. We have a small number of students who will be invited to come in. It is our goal at this time to invite students in swing K through 12 and in Earl 2 through 6 to come in for in-person instruction. I have to say that the staffing issues have been very, very challenging around that planning process. I am hoping that those programs will all open in person to some, you know, for some amount of hours of the day, not necessarily full days, the week on the 16th, when other classes resume. At this time, some of the, for, it is uncertain for some of the programs, because we have not been able to fully staff. We have some TA needs that we must fill to open the program. So I don't know how many people are listening tonight, but please spread the word. We've been using all kinds of networking, social media, school spring, contacting colleges and universities, and we are trying to fill those TA positions. So please join, join me in that and spreading the word. And also, I have some teachers who, due to medical pre-existing conditions, childcare, and other issues, are not able to accept in-person assignments. I think it's telling, and I will give specific numbers, because it makes me concerned in terms of our attempts to have in-person instruction or hybrid going forward. So my numbers were, I believe I had 11 teachers involved in, and specialists involved in this process. And out of the 11, I had three that are not able to take on those positions. So if those, if that's any indication of the proportion of people that would be impacted and unable to be in-person, if we try to roll out in-person instruction in larger numbers, certainly, it's just a concern in terms of managing and filling positions and making this all work. So we are staying the course. We are working hard to make this happen. I will be in touch with families pretty soon if it looks like programs might not be able to open on time in-person. Meanwhile, I'm continuing to network and interview and work toward our goal. But I will be in touch with families, and I have been in touch with families around the criteria for in-person instruction, which at this time is quite limited because of staffing, working with the public safety guidelines, and using the Department of Education's criteria. So we're starting small, and we're hoping to get it off the ground, but stay tuned.
Thanks, Allison. Are there any school committee members who have questions or comments for Allison?
I have some questions. This is Annie. So this is concerning to me. And, I mean, where, where are the possibilities for pulling skilled staff? Because this is, you know, a special kind of request. And, oh, this is terrible. I know you're thinking the same thing. What do you, what do you think your options are?
I have been working day and night to try to resolve these issues. And I haven't really spoken, there are TAs who have needs as well around whether they can be in-person or not. So I was really speaking more of the teachers in terms of my numbers. I am working, we have an MOA, so I'm, people are able to make these requests, and they have legitimate reasons for doing so. And other staff, if they're willing, could do some swaps or some movement, but also that has to be a voluntary process. So I, I'm using a lot of different strategies to try to resolve some of these, these issues.
Thank you. This is tough, tough place to be in.
I don't want to be more specific than that, because we're getting into individual cases and staff, and so.
Annie, I just add that in talking with Allison and trying to talk through all of the potential offsets, there's a concern to not set up a domino effect, so that when we move to the next level of transition. So right now, we're doing about 35 to, it's about 35 to 50 kids coming in for specialized program. So if you use your remote, your currently remote teaching positions as trade-off positions for other people, you've now created almost a secondary problem when you, when you flip the switch and start to move currently remote classes to hybrid, because at some point, the rubber's going to hit the road, and we're going to have to just directly add staff to assist in closing these gaps. And we can talk about that with the indicators. This is the piece that we've been watching all summer in terms of, and she's running about, in her, just in her department, just in the subsection of her department, she's running at about 27% staff unable to, to come to work and work under these conditions. For legitimate reasons, we have a very stringent process in place for qualifying. And that's about, that's just slightly north of where we are district-wide. So we're keenly aware that we're either going to have to start a large-scale campaign to recruit TAs and, and staff, and, and see where we are in terms of being able to fill gaps, to open up the classrooms.
So I know that we're going to get a financial update next meeting, but, you know, this seems like a potentially, like, not, I don't want to say unstable, but an uncertain area for budgets. And so I just want to make sure that we, I don't want to target that, but I also just, I do want to have a little bit more visibility on it.
Yep, for sure. And it's more an observation and sharing one of the challenges that we're trying to overcome. It doesn't have to be a deal breaker in any way. It's just something we're going to have to find solutions to, or alternate ways of addressing it. So more to come on that.
May I ask a question along these lines? So if, Allison and Pam, if you're having trouble finding good candidates, and, and people who are, you know, have the requisite amount of training, so on and so forth, and the specialization, I would imagine that everybody else is in the same boat. I mean, it's probably a small pool that every school is pulling from.
So Shannon, that's a great point. And I have been hearing from other school districts who received approval to open programs and now can't staff them. So we are not alone in this challenge. It's very, it's, it's heartbreaking, because we're ready to go, excited, planning, and then the staffing is an issue. I've never seen, that I can recall, such a dearth of TA applications. Typically, there are people who don't get teaching jobs, and at the end of the summer, we'll have many, we'll have a day of interviews and fill all our TA positions, but we're actually just not getting candidates. And we're doing a lot of networking, and through networking, I have drummed up a couple candidates who actually look good, but I need many more TAs than that. As far as the teacher positions, I have tried to do some work internally around switching some responsibilities and filling positions. But I've gone as, just about as far as I can with that. So I now will need to look elsewhere, you know, to look to outside applicants around some of the teaching positions that need to be filled. And again, the candidate pool is, is very limited. There's a little bit more for teachers than teaching assistants, interestingly. But it's, it's very limited, and I, I know that all school districts that, on the North Shore, that I'm hearing from are in the same situation. So we are, we're competing for the same pool of candidates.
Thank you for the candid answer.
Does anyone else from the school committee have questions or comments for Allison? All right. Allison, thank you so much. I know that if anyone can fill those jobs, it's you. I know you're amazing at what you do. So thank you for all of your work, and I will, I'm sure we'll be talking to you again soon.
Thank you very much.
All right. Allison, Julie. Julie's up.
Hey, everybody.
Hi, Julie.
Hi. I am going to share with you a quick update on our professional development, the 10 days that we have set aside for teacher learning days around remote learning and remote learning strategies. I know that I always have a PowerPoint to share, so I did create one, but it also is a tool for me to organize my thinking, just so you know where that's at for me. So Pam, I think I sent it over to you a little bit earlier. And I just wanted to run through some of the major themes around, you know, people are probably wondering what's going on during these 10 days, and there's a lot going on. I tried to just summarize the different trainings under subtitles. So I can just share them with you. Pam, do you have that PowerPoint available? I'm looking at the fall status update.
Yep, sorry. I thought I had it in.
That's okay.
The athletics, let me just dig around for it. If you have it in front of you and want to start, I will get that up.
Okay, that's fine. So I'll start with the first major focus area for us at the start of our training session was to really talk about our learning management systems. And so we started the first day with doing some introductory work just on the technologies that we'll be using at the teacher level. So laptops, document cameras, how to connect your materials in your classroom. Jenna Seymour, just, and Matt, we are just so indebted to them and all the work that they're doing to help us understand how all these technologies are working together and what they look like in the classroom. So they did some great work around that. And we were able to allot time to principals to bring their staff back together and, you know, kind of bring, start to ring in the new school year. So for today, our first day was really just centered around, you can go to the second slide, Pam, thank you.
Will do.
Was really focused on learning management systems, understanding CSO and Google Classroom and the common practices for classroom settings within those. So for CSO, for us, it's the brand-new learning management system. So it was really understanding the basic tenants of that, what we could do with it, and allowing people to share experiences with it and start to do the work within learning the platform and getting that underway for our students and families. Google Classroom, we have had that in place for grades three through 12 for quite some time. So it was really, you know, taking a look at common practices for classroom settings and talking through those materials, or sorry, those school-based expectations around Google Classroom. We're also talking about and looking at the focus area number two for Zoom, which is identifying skills and strategies for working with whole group and small group instruction with Zoom, but also the features within Zoom that allow us to put students into groups to do group work, or for teachers to work with small group instruction, for teachers to kind of organize a classroom type of setting using all the settings within Zoom. And so a lot of talk will be, and happening around that factor. That's our communication technology. And so we're really doubling down on, on using all those tools to help us facilitate good, good collaboration and communication with students. I can go to the next one. Another focus area for us is to really delve pretty heavily into the Google suite of tools to help people become really familiar and comfortable with the tools and that, the whole platform and what we're able to do within that. And then to really work within PairDeck, which is a Google Slides add-on that allows us to really share content in a way that brings in student collaboration and communication within the delivery of instruction using this tool. And so we're delving pretty deeply into that. We have some great trainers on that, and we're learning that as well. So everything that we're talking about here, I mean, teachers are doing this every day in their classroom, but now we're trying to think of this in a wholly different fashion to offer all of the deep instruction through this remote capability. And so it's really awesome to see so much communication and collaboration going on among staff, but we also know that they need the time to sit and kind of work this through for their grade-level work, for their content work, for their departments. And so we're training and offering time for a lot of collaboration around that as well. Another focus area for us is building community in the classroom in SEL support. So how to build a classroom community in a remote setting is a big level of work that we're working on at each grade level. And I'll explain a little bit more about the teaming capacity and how that's working. But we know that building community is really important for our students at the beginning of the school year, and our teachers are really cognizant of the fact that we're dealing with a whole new batch of students, so students that we haven't quite met before. So the kick-up at the beginning of the year will help. But it's really kind of getting into building those classroom structures and the community that our students will be functioning in every single day. Another focus area for us is developing student engagement using collaboration and the communication technology. So all of these different technologies that we've identified and bought licenses for, for the district, how do they fit into everyday instruction? And what technology gets the result that we're hoping to get for the level of instruction that we're doing? And which content area, you know, could really identify with a specific technology? Those are the conversations we'll be having in those, in those trainings. Another training area is building formative and substantive assessments. And so we're really looking at how to build, I should have put project-based in there as well, but it's really trying to figure out where assessment fits within the instructional model and how to do that using all these different technologies. And then another focus area that our principals talked about today really is focusing on how to build in student and parent meeting time and collaboration for individual support and grade-level support, and things to that effect. So I know this is a kind of 30,000-foot view. I could have, you know, showed you all the different trainings, and I wish I could kind of give you, you know, a lens into that, because they're pretty amazing. But I know that we have a pretty packed schedule tonight. So those are, those are the subtitles or the kind of major themes. You can go back to that, Pam, for just a second. So the other thing that Matt and Jenna worked on over the summer, which is pretty amazing, was taking all of the tutorials, the video tutorials, that we know support all of the technologies that we're learning about, and building a staff support site, so that after the training, or all of these trainings that we have organized, teachers will have a landing place to go to. place to go to, to review and kind of refine the practice a little bit more on a one-to-one level. So we'll have all of the, and we do have all of those videos organized there in a landing site for teachers. We have a middle, high school version. And then I think the next page is an elementary version, just to give a sense of, you know, where do you go after the training when you really need to kind of sit down with your work and try to determine how does this fit into my, to the structure of my day? And I think with that, many thanks, really. I mean, it's just, it takes a village to get this done. And I really have to thank the trainer teams at each school, the implementation teams at each school, Jenna Seymour and Matt Tany, the professional development committee, principals. Everybody has been working in just such an amazing way to bring this to life and we're really excited about it. It's a pretty heavy lift, but we're really excited to get these trainings underway and to learn new things. And that is what I have for tonight.
Thank you, Julie. You know, I love all this stuff. I won't, but I won't take up the time with questions. Do other school committee people have questions or comments, Julie?
I'll take up time. Two quick questions. How are we going to make sure that families are ready to go on the 16th? Are there going to be some kind of, let's make sure everybody's connected before then so that, you know, a classroom day, a class day is not spent like, oh, you know, Suzie's not, not online and she doesn't know how to get online, didn't have, you know, how are we working those things out?
Well, on a technical side, Avi and I are working on building an IT help desk for families to call in just to the connection point and getting through the Google Classroom and CSO aspect of things. But I will say that one of the things that we're realizing through some of these conversations is how much we have to walk through this with students and really teach students how to use this technology in the moment. So it will take time to teach students how to access CSO, for example, in first grade, a student in first grade and families. And so we're really aware of that and trying to think of ways to send tutorials home to families and to continuously support families through a help desk and, and just recognize the fact that this is all brand new for everyone. And so we will have to have conversations throughout the first few weeks of school with families around accessing this technology the way that we need to access it.
And just one other question, and that is, how are you building in time to redirect or regroup? And, you know, you're going to find that some things are working and some things aren't working. And how are you building in the time to kind of, you know, redirect or reassess what you're doing and what's, what isn't working?
Well, I will say that we have a couple of different things in place, but I'm sure that we can develop more. We do have our help desk, which will help us with our tickets in terms of identifying, here's, you know, a consistent pattern that we're noticing, phone calls that really need consistent support around internet connection or accessibility to some of these programs. So we're going to be able to monitor that and address those things as they arise. But we'll also rely a lot on teachers sharing feedback to us, you know, acknowledging, you know, this may be difficult or we need additional support with this. Can you help us figure out ways to, to bring more support to students and families? And, you know, we will troubleshoot that as we go. So we have a tech support system that we're building and putting in place for families. And we will also be able to collect feedback from teachers in addition to that.
My question was more along the lines of instruction. So, you know, we're delivering a math lesson this way and you know what? We see through, you know, the assessment that kids aren't getting it. So we're going to have to redirect or do something different that way.
Through instruction? So we do have the capacity to do assessments for our students. And I think we'll be using a lot of formative assessments to determine that. So one of the things that we'll be talking about in the next two weeks is looking at the direct content, and I'll just use elementary for an example. We do have assessments that we're able to access and implement that aligns with our curriculum to help us identify where our students are and to support them that way. If that's what you're, you know, I'm not quite sure how to answer that in terms of, are you talking about math? Are you talking about science?
I think she's talking about. Pam will interpret me.
You're asking a very like, in the weeds, daily practice conversation. And I think if we turned on Jen and John's mics, they would say this happens almost on a daily basis through informal teacher conversation and then on a formal basis, at least weekly or twice per week through team meetings where they're comparing notes, looking at, is it instructional delivery? Is it design of the assessment? Is there a curriculum deficit? So that will happen locally on an ongoing basis. And then it rolls up to the district-wide curriculum teams that meet on a monthly basis to discuss commonalities and issues or broader curriculum implementation questions. Is that what you're curious about?
I feel like that's something that happens on a daily basis and, and that's just the nature of teaching, you know, trying to determine how to, how to get at that concept or that skill or how to help support that student. I, I can't imagine that teachers aren't doing that minute by minute. And I feel like we'll probably hyper-focus on that at the beginning of the school year because we'll be trying to determine, is this a techno, a technological issue, you know, an access technology issue? Or is this, you know, a student need, you know, through the content and what we're trying to deliver content-wise? And so, you know, we are going to have to use some filters to try to figure out exactly where the need is around some of these things because what we're doing is so brand new for all of us. Does anyone else have any questions? Anyone else, questions or comments for Julie?
I have a quick one. This is probably a no-brainer, but just to make sure that I have it in my head. The iPads in particular coming in for K through two, those come preloaded with all of the apps and supports that they need, or is that something parents are going to need to take?
No, we actually purchased software so that when we send out the iPads, we'll be able to push out the apps that children will be using. So that's, that's another thing that we even talked about today in our CSO training. So I'm just thinking back to that, just talking about, you know, the number of clicks it takes or, you know, how to talk that through with students. And so I do think that we are going to need to give teachers the time to create the type of interaction that they need to have with students so that they can be successful through using these technologies. And we know that our kids use technology all the time, but they may not use it the way that we're going to be asking them to use it. And so we have to, you know, give people a little bit of space around allowing those practices to develop. And so it's going to be a little tough to try to determine, like, is this a technology issue or is this just a, you know, I got to think of a different way to help, to help support the student with, with what I'm doing.
And is that an ongoing?
We'll be sending more apps out through the, through our system.
And as an ongoing thing? So if something's added, it comes out through the system?
Yeah.
That as a parent is really great news. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Julie? All right, Julie, I know this has been so much work. I'm excited about the technology piece because I feel like when we're done with the COVID crisis someday, all this is going to serve us very well. And I think all this work that we're doing is a, is a long-term investment. So thank you for spending so much time and looking at it so thoughtfully.
Thank you.
All right, I think Avi and Jason are going to talk to us next about the HVAC system and some safety preparations.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Hey, everyone.
And I'm having a little video problem tonight, just on my own personal laptop. So I apologize, you're getting the audio only, but that Jason here is going to help with the presentation as well. And I don't know if Pam is able to throw up the slides.
Yep, I'm pulling it up right now.
Terrific. And, you know, we've talked about HVAC on prior meetings, but, you know, that's the acronym that we tend to throw out, but there's really multiple pieces to facilities reopening plan. And we thought it would be good to run through in a slide format, some of the things that we've been talking about in our prior update and to provide an update on how that's going because it's been taking a lot of work to get the buildings ready. And Jason will really dive into the details, but it's going, I think, really well considering what summers are always busy times for facilities groups because we try to get a real deep cleaning in, but this year we're also kind of really reimagining how we get the building ready in response to COVID and the guidelines. So, you know, Pam touched briefly a little bit before about negotiations. And this was a slide deck that we took our staff through to help them understand. And I, I'm going to thank Jason a thousand times, but one of them is just putting together this information. But this is, you know, how we help them to understand what we're doing to keep them safe and keep the students safe and keep our buildings ready. And we hope for those in the audience, it will help to give you a sense too for how we're going to be working, you know, overtime to make sure every, you know, the building is ready to go and people can have a lot of confidence that they're entering in a safe workspace and that we're going to be, you know, doing things, not just leading up to the opening of school, but throughout the year to keep things the way they need to be. So I'll try and keep this brief. You know, I've talked about the fact that we have a great team in house and I want to very briefly just say one more time about Jason. He has been such a leader for our district. I think all the principals who are on this call can attest to the fact that he's really dived in as an expert in the guidelines, a lot of which are about what the building needs to have ready. He's been a great consultant and advisor to the principals and to the directors of special education and curriculum and instruction as we've really tried to figure out what we need to do. He's always been there to give them his sense of how the buildings can be configured and respond. So I really want to thank him for that. There are three major areas that we've talked about. HVAC, which is heating, ventilation and air conditioning, basically air treatment, cleaning protocols and personal protective equipment, PPE. So we're very much on track with the guidance that's out from the DESE and also keeping in mind the, on a national level, the CDC guidance as well. And so we're going to touch briefly on each of these things. Some of them we've heard about before, so we'll keep the updates brief, but I think Jason can also just let you know where we're at. If we click through to the next slide, please. While we're waiting for that, basically, the guidance on HVAC is primarily around maximizing fresh air intake, upgrading filters wherever you can to, you know, trap any particles that, you know, we don't want to have floating around and also, you know, frequently replacing filters as well. And then the guidance recommends that you can, it's kind of a recommendation, but we definitely went full force in there to get an HVAC engineer on board. We've talked about that as well, who's helping us to make sure we stick with the guidance, but also the ASHRAE standards. And we've been working with a firm called Garcia Galuska and D'Souza. They're an engineering firm that consults to design firms and architects around how to build HVAC systems. They are very much experted in how do you make a system in the first place? What are the components? How are they supposed to work? What are the metrics? And so they've been an amazing resource for us. And what they've really done is given us a lot of detail, but it really, it all boils down to a checklist of what do we need to do to make sure we're ready, factoring on the HVAC side, the fresh air guideline. So as Jason goes through the slides, I'll give you a brief background of our HVAC configuration at the different buildings, which we've talked about a little bit, but also the checklist that we've gotten from GGD and where we are making progress. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Jason.
Sure, well, thank you, Avi, for the kind words. I'm also really impressed with Avi's, his ability to know all the acronyms of names. I mean, I just say GGD, but he knows all the names of all these vendors that we use. I don't know how you do it, but, but thank you again for the, for the kind words. And again, thank you for you and Pam and everyone for letting me speak tonight. So if we want to go to the next slide real quick, and again, I'll be kind of brief, I'll be kind of high level. I don't want to get, you know, too much in the, in the detail. I'll try and keep it, you know, as, as basic as I can and certainly will answer any questions that you may have at the end. So a brief overview of our HVAC systems, high school, middle school, HVAC equipment was built in 2010 and we have what we call a building automated system, which is basically a computer system that allows us to control all systems within the building. At Essex, we have a building automated system that was installed in 2018 for half of the building. We received that through a green loan grant and the rest of the building is controlled by manual pneumatic thermostats. And Memorial, the HVAC system at the new building, obviously brand new, a fully building automated system there. And similar to Essex, the old Memorial has controllers, manual with, again, with pneumatic thermostats. It's a quick overview of the buildings that, that we have here in the district. So next slide, please. So now we'll kind of touch about what the recommendations were, what the DESI guidelines recommended and what GGD recommended to us. And again, as Avi pointed out, it's really just a checklist to ensuring that we're going to be in compliance with ASHRAE, that we're going to be in compliance with all the guidelines. So in the, the black part portion is what their recommendations are and the red are what we have done to meet these recommendations. And again, I won't touch upon every single one, but, you know, the first one is we do this every single year and it's perform, perform preventative maintenance on all our equipment. And, you know, I've mentioned Steve Hunt numerous times on these meetings and that's really kind of his bread and butter, kind of his baby during the summer. He does such a great job going through each unit, each air handling unit, changing belts, changing filters. We have contracts with a company, an HVAC company called ATCO. So we brought them in for a number of weeks to go over all of our items. We got our boilers checked, our chillers checked, and we're starting to keep maintenance logs as well. So we have a tracking system for our PM service reports. DESI guidelines recommend that we keep a pretty thorough PM report and that they have their own kind of checklist on what we need to do for each system. And again, Steve's really just on top of that. You know, we had to replace and fix numerous, as, you know, again, as we normally do, things break over the year, things break over the summer. So, but we made sure that, you know, when school comes, you know, soon, that every system is working properly. And the same thing goes for the building automated system. This is basically making sure that, you know, as I mentioned before, it's a computer system that I can kind of say, okay, this fan turn on. Well, we need to bring in a company to make sure that, you know, everything that is on the computer system is actually working at the physical units. This year was a little different because we actually need to reprogram a lot of our, the building automated system to, you know, we call it now, no, kind of COVID protocol. So there's a lot of protocols that we need to do that we weren't doing before. So we brought them in and went through the system and everything is working fine. I know everyone's kind of heard about, you know, preventing or minimizing air circulation. So that's basically opening up the outside air dampers as much as we can to bring in and exhaust as much fresh air as we can. So we're trying to eliminate recycled air, which is basically the air that we all breathe in, you know, and energy efficiency is great. And in the past, we'd want to recycle air because it helps us save on energy. But now we're trying to bring in as much fresh air as possible and have that exhausted as much as possible. So we're able to do that in each building. Right now, all the buildings are, all the dampers are open, so we're all bringing in 100% fresh air. And we need to make adjustments come from the heating season because obviously eventually we won't be able to bring in 100% air, but we need to modify. So there's certainly some, some balances that we need to do to bring in as much fresh air as possible, but without freezing any equipment or freezing the room. So those are just adjustments that we'll have to make throughout the year. Next slide, please. Cleaning everything, clean the ventilation system. We brought in a company, they were here for a couple of weeks called Air Duck Services. They went through all of our equipment, all our ductwork, all our air handling units. They use a HEPA filtration system to get all the ductwork cleaned and they disinfected everything. So everything's as clean as possible. Our custodian maintenance staff do, you know, they have small classroom units, but this company really came in with, with a bunch of guys and spent about almost two weeks at our district, cleaning all of our systems. We need to, we are measuring all our airflow and basically what that means is when you have a fan blowing into your room, we're going to measure how strong that fan is to see, you know, how many turnovers we're getting, how many air changes we're getting and how strong that fan is and compared to what it's and compared to what it's been designed. So we're about three quarters of the way done with that. That is also a pretty extensive and I'm happy to say that, you know, three quarters of the way throughout the district, we had no real red flags. I mentioned before that we're currently, everything's open a hundred percent right now. That was also kind of part of the guidelines is to perform, they call it a building flush out. And that's basically operating all of our systems in what we call occupied mode 24/7 for one week prior to school. So basically units are running at a hundred percent 24/7, one week before school, basically to kind of clean out all the systems. So again, we, we're doing that and we'll continue to have that until school begins. And then we'll keep our ventilation system on for longer hours. We do this anyway, you know, school is, you know, eight to three or so forth, but we keep our systems on from, from six to 10. So again, we're already meeting the guidelines. And then the filter changes, we'll have to change our filters quite regularly because again, we're bringing so much fresh air that we'll need to change them quite frequently. MERV 13 or 14 filters are recommended, which we have at the high school, middle school and at the new memorial. What that means is it's basically, let's just, it's a thicker filter that won't allow many particles inside the classroom. So that's kind of basically what that is. So the higher the filter, the less particles can get inside the classroom. At Essex and Old Memorial, you know, they're older buildings. Those motors won't be able to push the air through that type of thick filter. So the recommendation is, is we need to supply a MERV eight filter, which will work and will, you know, will still satisfy the building. So to kind of keep those particles or kind of keep cleaning that room, next slide, please. The recommendation and DESI kind of understood this, that, you know, there's going to be some, some units that won't be able to handle a MERV 13 filter. So this is taken directly from the DESI guidelines where if you can't supply a MERV 13 filter, that we need to put an air portable air cleaner in each unit, or I'm sorry, in each space that can't have a MERV 13 filter. And so that's what we're going to do. So really at the classrooms at Memorial and the classrooms at, I'm sorry, at Old Memorial and the classrooms at Essex, we need to get an air purifier and those are scheduled to arrive on Thursday. And then the next slide is that lovely picture of the air purifier. So basically what this does is what that filter can't capture, this will, this will clean it. This will clean it and recycle the air. So again, and they're extremely hard to come by, but I've been tracking them for about two weeks now and happy to say that they're finally going to arrive on Thursday. We'll put them in each room. We'll show teachers how to use it. And again, this will clean the air that we can't get from, from those MERV 13 filters. Next slide. So, you know, as Avi mentioned, we've been working with GGD and the DESI guidelines and they, they follow the ASHRAE guidelines. And here's my acronym that I do know. So ASHRAE stands for American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, Air Conditioning Engineers. I'm proud of myself for remembering that, but what they do is they, again, they set all the guidelines for, for, for new schools. And 62.1 is actually specific on indoor air quality. So if we do all those checklists, which we're very close to completing, all of our schools are in compliance with the ASHRAE 62.1 recommendations. All right, now on to cleaning. So over the last week, we've been working with all of our custodial staff to get them properly trained on all cleaning protocols set forth by the CDC and the EPA. They have all the appropriate PPE, all the disinfectants that we're using and you can see them below. They're all registered by the EPA, making them safe and effective. So again, we use mainly three chemicals. We purchased all PPE for students and staff that were set forth by the, by the DESI and CDC guidelines. You know, that's all our masks, our gloves, our gowns, our goggles, our face shields and whatnot. We've added touchless flushometers, so hands free. We're, everyone's talking about touching less, so hands free. So we're installing touchless flushometers at the urinals and all the sinks in Essex and Old Memorial. We're hoping to start this, this week and it should be wrapped up by next week. So that's pretty extensive and again, to eliminate, eliminate touching. Toilet seat lids, that was, that was a hot topic. So we purchased and installed toilet seat lids in every single toilet in the district. So, you know, we won't, any splashing afterwards, so we can kind of capture that. We purchased and installed 250 hands free soap and sanitizer dispensers. We put those throughout the district. Each dispenser takes four batteries, so we've had to purchase, literally I saw a thousand batteries. So I've never seen so many batteries in my life, but those are all up. I think we just have the new memorial to install for the sanitizer dispensers. So in very good shape there. The cleaning equipment that we're going to be using is called an electrostatic sprayer. Electrostatic is kind of a newer technology. It's a great technology. Basically what the sprayer does is it, it basically charges all the particles. So when you spray at a certain object, that it will wrap around that object. So less, you know, waste and very efficient as far as timing is concerned. In each classroom, we're providing teachers with a bottle of hand sanitizer. We're providing them with disinfecting wipes. We're providing them with paper towels and we're also providing them with box fans that they can put in their windows. So some good welcome back swag for all the teachers that they can use. Next slide, please. Oh, yep, there we go. So again, we are, starting really last week, we really started our cleaning protocol because, you know, it, again, this is kind of new to us. And again, our main kind of focus is the cleaning and disinfecting of the buildings. So we started our process last week and again, following all the recommendations and all the guidelines. So our custodial staff is going to be responsible for cleaning and disinfecting any frequently touched surfaces. So any doorknobs, handrails, elevator buttons, you know, you know, anything that's frequently touched. We need to disinfect those objects three to four times per day. So again, you'll see kind of our head custodian with a, with a handheld electric static sprayer going through the building, cleaning those areas three to four times a day. And offices and classrooms, you know, furniture tables, desks, those need to be disinfected on a nightly basis. So again, we'll come in on a nightly basis, we'll sweep, take out the trash and then followed by we'll take a backpack, electrostatic sprayer and disinfect that entire classroom. And bathrooms, again, need to be disinfected and cleaned three to four times, you know, per day. So, so as I mentioned, we've already started our cleaning protocol and we're doing this on a regular basis just to make sure that we're ready for teachers, just so we're ready for students, so we can make any minor adjustments, minor tweaks. You know, I mean, going to encourage the principals to work with myself and head custodian on, you know, what's working, what isn't working. Are there times that, you know, we shouldn't be disinfecting this hallway because, you know, based on teacher's schedule? So it's got to be up in the air, but we're really kind of working hard just to perfect it as much as we can because certainly the cleaning and disinfecting of each school building, you know, and how important that is. And we're going to keep cleaning logs. You know, we'll probably keep a cleaning log in each bathroom so people can know when each building was cleaned and disinfected. I've been talking to some principals and staff. Again, we're supplying them wipes so that, you know, they can wipe down their desks. You know, if it's a copying machine, we'll provide disinfecting wipes on the copying machine. So again, they can kind of help us out whether it be again, their desk, their chair, you know, their classroom. So they can kind of help us out when, when it comes to that. So. And again, I'll just, we won't really touch upon, but here's kind of all the guidelines on what we need to order for PPE and what we did order. So again, you know, we ordered close to 30,000 masks. Keep going. Next slide, please. And then the next one is your gloves, your gowns, eye protection. So again, the guidelines are in the middle column with what we've ordered on the right column. So we are distributing most of these, you know, to the school. So teachers and staff, they are available for all of them. So. All right, kind of, you know, in closing, again, so we had a crazy, crazy, busy summer as everyone have, you know, I'm just so grateful. I know Avi gave me a compliment and I'll kind of just pass it down to the staff and just, you know, the work that they did. You know, Jennifer, we, me and Jennifer had to basically beg our head custodian Essex to take a day off. He just didn't take a day off until last week. We said, you know, please take a day off, you've been working so hard, you know. Carlos at Memorial, he's, you know, managing kind of the cleaning of a new building, plus the old building, plus he helps us out at night. You know, Andy over at the high school, you know, he had all the desks so perfectly lined up at four and a half feet. And when the decision made to make them at six feet, I called them at 6:30 in the morning, just to be like, sorry, we got to make them all at six. And he's like, yeah, I was at the meeting, no problem, already, I'm already doing the classrooms. It's just, that's, that's just the attitude that these guys have. And again, Steve Hunt, you know, just can't say enough nice things about them. And then this is only going to continue, you know, you know, hopefully we can get it right. It won't be perfect, things are going to break, but I'm, you know, very confident that we'll be able to fix things, you know, as quickly as possible. And again, it's, it's all because of the staff that we have. So, so very grateful and happy to take any questions that you guys have.
I have a question, a couple of questions.
Sure.
Thanks for all this work. I just wondered if you could speak to the, are we staffed for the manual air exchange that has to happen in Essex? And the clean, you know, and then in any of the schools, do we have, or do we have to have additional cleaning staff on hand?
Yes.
Other than what we have today?
So great question. So again, that's why we're, we've been kind of starting last week just to find out that answer, you know, just because I'm, you know, I don't know how long it takes us to disinfect every classroom, right, at the high school. So again, that's why we started last week. So right now we have three staff at Memorial, two are going to be at Essex and we have six at the high school, middle school. And each night I kind of, you know, or I'm sorry, each morning I bug Carlos and Andy and saying, okay, how was the cleaning? How did it go? What did we need to adjust? What do we need to do there? So, so right now we have the appropriate amount of staff. Because, you know, when we go into a classroom now, there's not going to be as much trash. There's not going to be as much dirt. There's not going to be enough, as much food to clean. So we're prioritizing disinfecting. I suspect if we do go hybrid, we'll have to add a few staff members to kind of pick up with that cleaning while we continue to disinfect. But right now, while in a remote setting, we do have enough staff and, and, but again, we'll, we'll have to adjust, you know, if we do go remote. I'm sorry, if we do hybrid, sorry.
Right. And then regarding the, the air exchange in Essex, you did half the school, we have half to do. What's the cost on that? And is there, Avi, I'm just wondering if you can speak to whether there's, is that something we can look to Essex or speak to them about in collaboration? About maybe the Green Grant, would that?
Yeah, yup, yeah. So I mean, they were finishing, you know, the Green Grant community, again, that's how we got the BMS system over at the school a couple of years ago. That was prior to my arrival, but the town used it last year, I believe for streetlights, I want to say. And so, but we kind of made an agreement with, with Brendan and whatnot that the school could use it this year if he has no other project. So that is kind of the plan. Certainly I need to kind of, we need to talk to him and follow up with him. But, you know, as we kind of last left it that, you know, they have this streetlight project that they use the green loans last year and that we could use it to finish off the building next year.
Okay. And just one other thing I wanted to say, there have been a lot of people criticizing the district and the school committee about their concerns that we're not going hybrid. And I think when you look at all of the things that you've heard tonight, it's very clear that we are trying to be, to get ready for hybrid and we're investing in personnel, in practices, in equipment to get us ready to do that. And it isn't easy and it isn't something that can be done quickly. So I appreciate all the work that you're doing and it's clear to me that we are preparing for an eventuality that will come. But it's, we need to make sure that there are a lot of things in place before we can bring people in safely. So I really appreciate all the work you're doing here and it's clear to me that we're doing what we need to do.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. No problem at all.
Xani, does anyone else on school committee have questions or comments for Jason or Avi?
Just, just a quick one, Sarah, I just want to echo what Annie said there about, and this is Ken, forgive me, I don't have the video on at the moment, but about all of the activities that are going toward preparing school. Joanne Mayno earlier on made a comment about, you know, the school committee can stay focused on policies and where we're at. One of the things I'm really getting from tonight is that normally when you say somebody needs to stay in your lane, it's that there's an overlap and there's a conflict between what groups are doing, but I really feel that every group here I'm seeing tonight, especially Jason and Avi, are focused on their lane and getting things going and keeping things moving forward. So we, we are ready for more in person. So I'd say this is a really good functional example of people staying in their lane, getting it done, but we're all moving forward together. So thanks, Jason, again, and Avi for, for getting, making sure the facilities are safe and where they need to be.
Oh, you're welcome. No, no problem at all.
Thanks, Ken. Anyone else have questions or comments for Jason and Avi? All right. Thank you, guys. This is very thorough.
Sorry, you were too thorough. Yeah.
It's, it's good. It's, we need all this information. I know, yeah, people are asking for it. So it's really so that our buildings are prepared. All right. So I think we're ready for the fall athletics planning update. And I know a lot of people on the call are really waiting to hear this part, so moving along.
All right.
For everybody, first off, thanks for all the hard work this summer. I know it's been crazy and I'm guessing that you all weren't expecting this to fall on your plate. So thanks in advance. I'll be brief. We're still in the discussion phase. Next step is recommendations to the principals that starts this week. So we're sending some recommendations to the principals this week and then we'll continue through next week. It's also important to note that the ADs are very much unified in all the decisions. We're using all the safety guidelines from the state and the MIA as a minimum standard. We're adjusting and adding, adding anything that is specific to the district or to the league. So like I said, it's a minimum standard for the DESE and EEA and MIA. So an ideal structure.
Jordan, Jordan, I'm glad, and after, we're just having a little trouble hearing you. Can you get a little closer to your microphone? Thanks.
Is that better? Great. So the, the ideal fall sports structure, we've already moved football and cheer to the fall two period in February, February through April. So we ideally be playing cross country, field hockey, golf and soccer. Regular season, September 18th through November 1st with two weeks of postseason. Schedule is once around the league, so soccer and field hockey, golf, give or take about 10 games, 10 matches. Cross country about five meets. Everything's in the league, there's no out of the league competitions. The schedule is made as best as possible to keep things between the same schools for that week. Golf is, is, it's in its own category, it's tough to get the courses, so there's some overlap with golf. And sports will be played on different days. So soccer, for example, would be Tuesday, Friday and field hockey would be Wednesday, Saturday, things like that nature. That's kind of ups out with the transportation issue as well, which I'll shadow out in a second. Other scenarios in, under consideration, obviously what I just spoke about was our ideal situation. But if that's not deemed safe, we would go to these other alternatives. Varsity only competitions with sub varsity instructional program. Other idea would be have golf and cross country go this fall and move soccer and field hockey to fall two in February. And then the last idea would be to move all sports over to fall two. So I know there's a lot of unanswered questions at this time. We're still working on a lot of those. Some of the big ones here, the rule modifications. Recently the MIA released these modifications and there's a link on that last slide that we can share that everyone can access tomorrow. One of my biggest concerns is fall two, the weather challenges. So if we move all fall sports to fall two, beginning February 22nd and going through April 25th, golf, there's no chance that we can play during that period, the courses aren't open. Cross country is very unlikely, given the weather, same with field hockey and soccer. So moving those sports to fall two. You know, realistically, it might be just canceling the season altogether. There's a chance that we do have better weather and we can make it work, but in my opinion, that. But, um, in my opinion, that realistically may not be possible. Um, cross country, we're working on, um, finding a course. I know that they met, um, I believe yesterday. Um, some of the guidelines and sport modifications. Minimum requirements for spacing, some of our home meets. Um, we can't use the venues because of, um, the tight narrow courses. Um, so that's, we're still trying to figure that one out right now. We're also still talking about whether the fans will be allowed, um, the policy with spectators, how to manage it, um, what our limitations are and, um, adhering to the guidelines from the state. Um, user fees, uh, that's something that we're still in discussions about, um, at a district level, what we're going to do. We have four modified seasons. Um, so all the schedules are shortened a little bit. Um, so we need to discuss that, especially with, um, we may have a few added expenses given, um, our guidelines, especially with transportation. Venue protocols, uh, we have a subcommittee that are working on, um, these protocols and policies in place. So that when we travel in Newburyport or Amesbury, um, all the students and the coaches get on the bus knowing exactly what to expect, where to go, what's open, what bathrooms open, uh, what bench you use. So there's no questions. Where do you go? You're not having kids wander around your campus, trying to go through doors. Um, so we're still working on that. Uh, I touched on transportation and budget a little bit. Um, with the guidelines, we can only have thirteen students on a bus, as you know. Um, so we're looking at doubling the, the button amount of buses that we have. Um, we're also working on having staggered starts. So having games at five thirty and seven or four and five thirty, things of that nature. Um, we're also working on a few other cost-saving initiatives. Um, because we have less games, we have less officials, we have less scorekeepers. Cross country, we don't have any invitational fees. Um, so from a budget standpoint, we're still working on, um, going back to even as much as, as possible. And so we don't have to have that many added expenses overall. So that's where we're at right now. We're, we're kind of in the discussion phase still, like I said, when we're going to have recommendations to the principal going forward. We'll have a lot more concrete information and details. Um, we're going to have some decisions that are made and both conducted from now until the fifteenth. So, um, I expect a lot more information, a lot more detailed information similar to what Jason provided you guys on the facilities aspect of things. Like I said, uh, the, there's links on that last slide, um, EA guidance, there's all the modifications from the sports. So you can access those links at any point, um, when we share that, the slides. Any questions?
Hey. Does any, does anyone on school committee have questions for Jordan?
I have a couple. Sorry. Um, so I wonder, I mean, I, you don't have to answer this tonight, but I'm wondering about, uh, training for coaches. Um, this summer, I think I've seen some pretty, um, upsetting things and seen some things that have not reflected well on some of the sports teams that have been playing. Front page of the cricket, I think a couple of weeks ago, had a bunch of kids slapping hands with no masks on after a game. I really worry about whether our coaches can, can, uh, control what's happening, uh, with some of these players and, um, and I want them to get training from us as to our expectations. So, um, that's, I, I'm, I'm not hopeful that, um, that coaches can be successful with this because I just have not seen great stuff this summer.
I know that there's been resources from the MIA and the NFHS, the National Federation. Um, they did have a COVID coaching course that we've sent out to coaches as well. Yeah, that's definitely something we can talk about, having in-person training, in district training.
Yeah, but see, like, an online course is great, but I, I want the people who are coaching from us to hear from us about what our expectations are and what our requirements are. So, um, I think that's important.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll definitely have a lot more.
I think that when we look at, uh, when we talk to our coaches, our coaches are our employees and we certainly have far more jurisdiction over them and oversight over them than, uh, maybe some of the summer coaches too. Um, I was pretty upset last night to hear that there were two other towns playing on our field that jumped our, our fence and had, um, coaches coaching a soccer team to have a match on our field. Um, we were not aware of that and, um, I'm pretty upset by that. But I think when things are under our own control, under Jordan's watch, um, we can have those things really managed quite well.
So can we, I, we haven't heard about that. If someone could give us an update, um, offline, that would be great.
Happy to do that. Thank you.
Any other school committee questions for Jordan and/or Tricia about fall sports or sports all year?
I have a question about the transportation. Um, this may be putting the cart before the horse. We may be getting way ahead of ourselves here because we don't know what the season looks like. Um, but last year, and I think even the year before, we had some transportation issues in that there were not enough drivers to even cover some of the athletic, um, you know, meets or games or whatever. And we were kind of left high and dry a couple of times with no driver and no bus, um, because of the shortage of drivers. I can't imagine that there's now like an influx of people wanting to drive buses during COVID. So what do you, how do you feel about that, Jason? I mean, um, uh, Jordan, have you heard anything about that? Or is it just too early to even talk about?
No, we've spoken with Salter and they, they've said that they're confident that they're not going to have any issues. I think part of that is because schools are remote. Um, typically the period that we can't get buses are right after school because of the after-school routes. Um, and they usually tell us like three thirty, we can get you whatever you want. Um, this year because schools are remote, they, they are confident that we'll be able to get what we want.
Other questions for Jordan or Tricia? I have a question. Um, I, I'm not a super sporty person. So given all the rules and restrictions, is it still going to be worth it to have a season?
I think it's, it's much better to have something than to have nothing, um, given the alternatives that we have. If we deem everything to be safe, uh, from the social emotional aspect of things, uh, the mental health aspect of things, um, I would love to have sports, but, uh, we'll, we'll look at all the details and the guidelines and the protocols and, um, we'll have more information on that.
Yeah, I'm inclined to agree with you, but that was just something that I heard on the street. So I thought I'd throw it out there. Um, Tricia's raising her hand.
Yes, I am. I just want to also add, I mean, I think this is a conversation about athletics, but I think we also need to talk about the arts and drama and robotics. And the state came out with guidelines about that on, on Monday. And there are opportunities for some outdoor interactions between students. They are very limited. But I think there's something else that we need to explore. So we're inclusive of all students in terms of their passions at high school.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. And, um, as we all know, one of the main reasons the high school's remote is because we can't provide our educational program. But anything that we can do to get our kids interacting with each other and the teachers, I think, is really important. Um, does anybody else have questions? Kat, Tricia's raising her hand.
I just have one quick one. Just thinking back to what we're dealing with, trying to get our in-person high and special needs off the ground. Are you confident that this can be staffed? Are, are your coaches into doing this and that sort of thing?
Yeah, I've spoken with all of our coaches. Um, everyone is on board with, um, doing whatever it takes to make this work. There has been two coaches that are concerned about hopping on a bus, but we have assistants to make that work.
I think one of the big differences is that, um, athletics is outside. And if we were to run any other, other extra, uh, curricular activities, they would be outside as, um, in contrast to maybe some in-person interactions within a school building. But, um, certainly all things are to be considered.
I have one more comment too, off of Sarah's question. Um, kids are going to play sports this fall regardless of what decision that we make. Um, and we're, we're being very thorough, um, strict with these guidelines and protocols. Um, it's, to me, it's better to have sports under our protocols and instead of having them go off and play AU and club, um, like Phil mentioned, um, going up to New Hanford and being exposed to, um, different states, multiple states, at least they can be under our eyes and our watch. And under our guidelines as well.
Yeah. Uh, I have a follow-up on that then. So if you play a school sport at Manchester Essex, does that preclude you from playing sports with another league? Because we don't have control over that, those other cohorts? And then I have one other.
Um, the MIA has a rule, um, the loyalty to the school rule. If you play a Manchester Essex sport, um, you're loyal to, to that sport. So if you miss a practice or a game for a AU club practice, then you have to miss some time. However, if it fits your schedule, then a family can decide to do both.
Hmm. Okay. And then the other thing, um, I think I'm going to probably throw to Patricia because you and I had this conversation, I think in Abby's senior year about seniors who, um, rely on that sport, success in sports to get into colleges. And I wondered if you could speak a little bit to that because that is a huge factor for some kids, um, for college choices.
Yeah, I really think that is something that maybe our really strong, um, student athletes are thinking about right now. And I think that's kind of a, a question across the country. And I'm not sure there's a really solid answer to that right now. I'd want to do some more research on that. Uh, because kids are struggling across the country about are they able to play or not able to play? And are, um, coaches able to really have a good sample of their performance? So, um, Jordan might be able to add more about that, but it is something that is, um, probably concerning for those students and something that we need to find a workaround for.
Yeah, that's a, that's a tough question to answer. Um, I know that typically a lot of sports, that a lot of kids get the exposure in their summer programs. Obviously, high school sports definitely help. Um, I've spoken with some college coaches and they're definitely struggling with this process of recruiting in general. And then they're limited to, you know, video or word of mouth. But that's definitely something that nobody has the right answer to right now.
So what are the next steps? It sounds like you still have some unanswered questions and, um, some procedures to put in place. So, uh, is there going to be some more coming back to us at our next meeting?
Yeah, you have a lot more, a lot more details.
And, and I have a, a couple of questions to help frame that. So Jordan, at this point, I'm not trying to put you on the spot and just say I'm not, I have no idea if that's the real answer. Do you get the sense that Cape Ann League is going to go for it and go for a full season, all four sports? Or do you think there may be a modified, maybe just, um, pushing maybe soccer, field hockey off to fall two and running with cross country and golf? What do you think the, the league decision is likely to be?
All sports. I think there's right now a mixed bag of, there are some schools, some of the hybrid schools that are a hundred percent in, they're going to go. Um, there are some schools that are optimistic and there are some schools that are hopeful. Obviously, it's all under the recommendations approval, um, of the principals. So, um, we haven't gotten to that point, the, the structure of the season. But the structure that I showed you is, um, where, where, where we are at as athletic directors.
I can add.
So would, go ahead.
I think we need to have Thursday of the principals and the athletic directors to hear more from the athletic directors about what they have found and have greater consideration by the principals about what direction we should go going forward and if there is a unified direction or if there might be some differentiation between the schools.
So then my question for the committee is if the, if the Cape Ann League, so Tricia's one vote. If the Cape Ann League does vote to go forward with the season, then it's going to get pushed back to the committee to make the determination whether or not we participate because we're designated remote at this point. At least at the high school, even though we're doing some in-person. Um, so what do you, what information can we come back with on the fifteenth that will help you if you're in the position of having to make a determination? You know, what should Tricia and Jordan know going into this next series of meetings about where the committee stands? And then what do you need to know to help you make a decision? And of course, we'll bring a recommendation. But just so we, we do the right fact finding.
I know other people are probably going to weigh in on this, but for, for me, I think to Annie's point, I would really want to know about the training that our coaches are going to go through and the expectations, um, for these, for the, for the coaches and for our students. Um, and that would probably be my, my main thing. Um, but I'm sure other people want to weigh in.
Can I just clarify? We're talking about one season at a time at this point. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
I think actually, I just because, and I don't want to get too specific, but I know there was an issue over the summer. Um, I don't know what the expectations are for providing information for contact tracing, should there be an outbreak on a sports team. But I know that there have been issues in the past. And so I want to make sure that all of those, I would put that under the umbrella of expectations for our coaches and students, that everybody would be willing to participate in anything they need to do to help our boards of health.
Um, this is Matt. It just, it seems strange, given how how much, uh, people are focusing on cohorts and keeping cohorts together, that you'd be able to participate in a Cape Ann League again, potentially like an AU or a club league, as long as the schedules don't conflict. I'm surprised it's not kind of one or the other. I'd be interested in learning more about that.
Yeah, that. Jordan, has there been any discussion about, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ken.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, has there been any discussion? And I guess this gets to my, and I know I beat the dead horse on this, that there's so many, I feel like there are a lot of inconsistencies in the guidance. So how has the athletics guidance? And you guys may not have the answer, but I just feel like I'd throw it out there. How do we square the, the, the structure around the school day and maintaining cohorts and not allowing people to intermingle in groups of more than twelve to twenty-four and then just say, okay, we're going to go inter-town leagues and have kids crisscrossing all over the North Shore? And I get that the map is the backdrop and we're in mostly, you know, uh, yellow, green and white. So the conditions are good for, for spread. It just, they don't lessen the guidelines and the, and the restrictions based on the maps. I'm just kind of curious if there's been any discussion on how we would explain the, the two different modes.
Yeah, we have, um, we have a subcommittee meeting about the procedures and protocols, um, specifically with the venues to, um, tomorrow. Um, so I, it's my intent to have more information for the next meeting.
Okay.
And answer that question and to make it everything a little bit more easier. Dot, dot our i's and cross our t's.
So do they think the season's really going to be able to start on the fourteenth?
Eighteenth, yes. There are some schools that are a hundred percent.
So it's scheduled for the eighteenth?
Like they're a hundred percent in, yes.
Okay. That helps. Thank you.
I think another big difference between, um, in-school um, instruction and athletics outside is the difference between being outside and inside and the differentiation of the number of people who can interact in outside venue versus an inside venue. But again, that's something that the, um, sports committees are looking at closely. And, um, Jordan will definitely be able to report on more deeply at the next meeting.
Yeah, the, the sports committees, um, they release pretty strict guidelines for the sports modifications. Um, basically getting rid of any play that facilitates or encourages contact. Um, obviously sports like field hockey and soccer, it's kind of in, in the nature. So it can be tough to. Um, as athletic directors, we're, we're kind of putting together protocols and guidelines so that, um, there's no stone left unturned outside of that field of play. Like, um, having assigned seats in the bus to step-by-step entry-exit pathways to closing bathrooms or everything of that nature.
I just had a real quick one, Jordan. Um, Ken Warnock, thank you very much for all you're doing on this. And it's very dynamic as it goes. One thing, and it doesn't have to be answered now, but some of the issues I'd heard about over the course of the summer around these weren't necessarily even so much around the players and the coaches. over the course of the summer around these weren't necessarily even so much around the players and the coaches, but the spectators and the crowds. Hopefully, there's also some sort of expectations being set or, you know, obviously, we all love to see our kids play and it's a strong tradition, but that's, I'm assuming there's some element that'll go through whatever those expectations, if we do kick off there or when we do kick off the season and get rolling in sports.
Yep. So our spectator policy is one of the recommendations that we're sending forward to principals for Thursday. I will say that if there aren't any fans, if that is decided, we are partnering with the NFHS to provide a pick slot system. It's a live stream, live stream system and it's our hope to have all games, all sub varsity and varsity games on Highland Field, which we've livestreamed. So families and parents can, can watch their students play. In addition to that, there's, there's a fee to subscribe either per season or per year. And we get a percentage back based off of, you know, what we decide the price to be. There's at least a chance for some revenue stream if we go that direction.
Awesome. Thank you. Glad to speak over.
I've got two questions and Jordan, thank you very much for all of this. It sounds pretty exhaustive. My first question is, are we thinking about fees? What are we going to do there? And my second question is, I'm still a little confused as to how it comes back to school committee and what this process is because I think you just mentioned that Tricia has a vote and then it goes somewhere else. So can you just, Pam, walk me through like this on how it comes back to us? And why?
So Tricia gets a vote as part of the Cape Ann League to determine what the league wants to do. Am I stating that correctly, Tricia? The principals will all vote as to whether or not to proceed with the season, modify the sports offered in the season or not run the season, just like the NEC did.
Yes, we will, although the NEC is now having some kind of kickback from what their original vote was. But yes, we will, and we have a dream to do it right.
So she'll get to vote as a, as a representative to that group for our district. So whatever the group decides then sets up the committee to make a determination as to whether or not you're going to let our students play. Because we've designated ourselves as a remote learning district. So all remote learning districts are kicking the final decision to whether we play or not back to the school committee.
Okay, I get it. Thank you.
That's all. Yep.
And then what about fees? What do we, have we even gone down that road yet?
User fees?
Yeah.
We've opened discussions, but we haven't been close to making a decision about that yet.
I think that Jordan and the other athletic directors are looking at the cost of transportation under this model versus the prior model and how that impacts the fees.
Yeah. So for the next meeting, I'll have budget comparisons, comparisons basically from last year to what we project for this year. So we'll get a better sense of what to expect from a budget standpoint.
Can I say my, my thought on what I'd like to see for the next meeting, when, or whenever we do need this, would be to, to really follow up with that accountability to make sure, I mean, the, the training is one thing, but also what happens when these things don't fall into place? Either at the player level, the fan level, the coach level? What are next steps? And, and you know, what is, the thing that's going to allow this to keep happening is success straight from the gate. And so that to me is important to know.
All right. Does anybody else have anything for Jordan or Tricia? All right, Jordan, thank you so much for all your work on that. I know the kids really want to get back to their athletics. So we look forward to hearing from you again next time. Thank you.
We will have an exhaustive plan next time that we come back after we have the opportunity to meet with the league. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. Really appreciate it. Okay, mine is fairly brief because the team did such an outstanding job of giving you a sense of what we've been working on and what we have coming up over the next couple of weeks. So mine are really kind of technical top shelf. So coming up this week, we're going to be publishing out to parents, remote learning options. And this takes me back to Teresa's question earlier on, because we have had a few folks mention that they don't like the rigidity of the school day online concept and they may want something else for their students. So we have, and I'll be brief on this tonight and we'll, we'll email it out to people. So we have been investigating what we're calling an independent remote option for parents. This would allow us to buy into the state-sponsored platform, which is the Florida Virtual School. It's an asynchronous model. It has course, core, core subject coursework at all grade levels, but it's, it's at your own pace. If someone chose this option, they would be making a year-long commitment. They would receive MRSD credit, but work independently. And we do believe we'll be able to assign students or faculty advisor to kind of check in along the way, keep tabs, answer questions, but it will be a design your own schedule. So this might be for the family that they don't like the idea of logging in eight to three each day for their elementary student, you know, seven, eight to two for the high school. They want a little bit more flexibility. This is something they may want to investigate by reaching out to Julie and talking it through. There's not a whole lot of detail from the state on what it looks like. There's no nice pamphlet brochure to share, but we can share with you the documents that we have from them. So we would be sponsoring this. We would be buying in to the program. I think we can buy in bundles of seats, bundles of 25 seats. And I believe it's 199 for an elementary student and 299 for a secondary student. So this is the asynchronous option. I would say for folks who are hanging in and still listening, going remote only and not participating in the hybrid probably gives you more in and out options for the year. Because as was explained earlier, our remote option is built to integrate with the hybrid option. So if you're thinking that you aren't ready yet to even consider remote, let's say we start to, to turn that corner and bring more kids back in October, you're just personally not ready yet, you could stay with, with your, you could be assigned to a class as you have been already. Your student could work with that class, let's say through till January. And perhaps in January, you have greater comfort in returning the child to school and we're still going strong with the hybrid because everything is working in our favor and we've figured out all of the obstacles. This gives you that option to integrate back at the semester breaks. It also gives you ongoing, you know, albeit tech, technology driven, but it gives you that interconnectedness with a class at the school at which your child attends. They of course would be part of any in-person activities or community building activities that we could develop along the way. So the remote only option and foregoing the hybrid kind of gives you more of the school-based experience. The independent remote, again, is for folks who just want to work at their own pace, who may not want to have to follow all the ins and outs of, are we hybrid, are we not? Do we start and then have to change back? That would allow you to kind of go off and do what works for you for the year and then receive MRSD credit and go up to the next grade level when hopefully things return to normal in the fall. The third option is really just to opt to the, the, the choice that's always there, which is just homeschooling. And that's a completely independently derived plan that a family would put together. You write the plan. If you choose to partner with an online group or a homeschooling team, you could do that. You just need to document it for the district. We just need to know where all the students are who live within our boundary. So this would stay on file with us and until which time you want to return back to school. And we've had families homeschooling for years for a part of their student's education or for their whole education. It's a, it's an option that's out there for families. So Julie Riley, she presented earlier, the curriculum director. She is point person on organizing both of these initiatives. And we'll put this out to you in an email, so you have it for reference. Let's see, I'm trying to move quickly because I know the hour is late. So we've already covered clearly, you're getting communications from principals and teachers this week. They'll be typical back-to-school information with schedule and classroom information. I've had a chance to look at at least two of the training videos. I think people who are trying to get a sense of the schedule and what the day will look like, once those get, go up and are shared with you, if you just take the 10 or 15 minutes, it will take you to go through them. They're excellent and you really will get a sense of what the learning platforms look like, how they're visually arranged and how the teachers are structuring their day in the beginning and how they'll be tapering off and trying to create greater independence as you go. So I cannot, I wish I had more time and I was earlier in the program tonight to just say what a phenomenal job people are doing to meet the feedback that we got in the spring about creating structure and improving the workflow for kids and families and trying to be out front and getting people prepped and ready to go. So this is a team effort and I'm just so super impressed by all the work people are doing. I'm really blown away by it. So things we're going to be working on is lunch availability. There'll be more information coming out that, about that probably next week. Like last year, meals will be available for students. We're working with food service to have a local distribution option. Last year, folks were traveling to Gloucester for pickup. We are going to, if we don't do it in-house, we will have an onsite distribution plan for families. And then we're just going to be working on a lot of the problems that you've heard. You know, it's, we like to solve problems. We're optimistic about finding solutions. It may take a little time, but we're going to go to work on everything that we'll talk about on the indicator list in just a second. And I just want to shout out on the Y program. At this point, we've got 40-plus students enrolled. So a really good response rate. I know they've been working with families on the cost structure to make sure it's minimal impact to families and nobody will go without support if they need it. We're starting at Essex Elementary as the primary site because it's already been pre-approved by EEC. That's the Early Childcare Division of the Department of Ed. So it meets all of those standards. Our secondary site's going to be the middle high school. And then we're also preparing for the next phase, which is when we go hybrid and we start bringing kids back in the building, we're going to have a space issue. So we're working on off-site locations, perhaps in Beverly, perhaps in Ipswich, where we could situate the programs if we run out of space locally. So that's an if, not a definite. But just to let people know, we are kind of thinking through how this is going to play out through all the possible scenarios. So the one, my main job tonight was to bring to you a set of indicators so we could start tracking and structuring our decision about when to try to make a move or what conditions would allow for a move to hybrid. I see it playing out and you, you're obviously at liberty to change the schedule as we take a look at some of the indicators that I've been talking about in past meetings. Tonight, you can kind of digest those, give some feedback and we can finalize them in a chart on the 15th. And then on October 2nd, I believe it will be our first monthly report on the indicators and we can talk about setting up the transition plan. With each new phase of this, we will have to renegotiate terms with the association. I think you heard a little bit about how that will go. They're time-consuming, but they're constructive. So we'll need enough time to have that built in as well as then kind of get things up to speed from a facilities point of view. We definitely saw that when we closed the agreement with the association, then there were a lot of definites. So it did take about a week or so to start putting some things in place. So just to bear that in mind with the proposed schedule. So we would need to know for certain by October 2nd if we're trying to get something accomplished for later in that month. So based on our conversations, this is just kind of a demo chart of what, basically they're for consideration. So these, this chart reflects items that I've mentioned in the past, kind of a combination of things I've been watching and problems we're trying to solve to make things feasible. So I bucketed them into health, safety, program staffing and financial. You can certainly add or subtract if you like. I think one thing worth mentioning, and I know, I know folks who, who feel like we should be going to hybrid now are really focused on the COVID levels, right? And, and we, I think we have to, we agree. There's no dispute. The, the COVID levels, according to the ranking system and the, the map system and state assessment system that's come out, we're unshaded and we're, and/or green in our whole vicinity. We are good to go. So we have checked that box. That box has been checked since we started having the discussion. It's when we get into the subcategories, and you may want to call them readiness more than anything else, that we start to run into a few of the obstacles or things that just haven't come to be yet. So I think Jason gave you, gave you a good sense tonight. We are just about there. So the green is good to go. The yellow is cautious but in progress. So we're moving toward green. And then the red boxes are, at this point, we just don't have an answer for them and maybe they don't even need to be on the list. So I know there's different camps on local tracing capacity and surveillance testing availability. So this is something for the consideration of the committee. If you choose not to include it, we don't have to. Why are they here? They're here because they've been regularly brought up either through the state or local association or in other districts as obstacles to opening school because it's an ask by one or more groups. Sometimes it's a parent group. Sometimes it's a school group. So it's whether or not we should consider this. I had, did have a conversation with Department of Ed on this today. There may be on the horizon some type of surveillance, approved surveillance testing. They are very clear that what's out there now isn't really designed to do this. But they also were disclosing that Natick, Wellesley, a coalition of Revere, Chelsea and several other districts, I believe Swamscott, they're looking at third-party contractors to provide this. So think of this, I've been, this one has been explained to me like the college model or what they're doing in the workplace, right? So I'm not going to get into, I'm, I'm not the person to determine whether or not it's the most valid thing to do. But I can say this is one of those things that people are asking for to increase level of comfort to be in the building. So we can look at it from the scientific perspective for sure, but also understanding the source of the ask is probably to give some sense of comfort that we are catching things before they develop. So we're not waiting to, until a crisis happens to react to COVID in our schools. Now, if we stay in white and green, I think the experts are going to say you shouldn't get to that point. But then everybody's going to throw at us their different anecdotes that they've heard, like the wedding in Maine. Well, Maine's numbers are great, but they just had 57 people go to a wedding. So I think the trick in this is there's definitely the science that has to drive the safety decisions, but there's also the, there's also, I think, just such a high level of conflicting information and lack of trust in some of the sources, certainly not our local sources, but we're part of a national conversation about this. Our state has done really well, but there's just a lot of, there's a lot of concern and a lot of jitters. So I, I think we could vet these over the next couple of weeks and decide whether or not they should stay on the list. But they're there for consideration. I think program has been the heart of the discussion at the committee over the summer and whether or not everything we need to do to make those safety guidelines really allows us to appropriately deliver our program. So I just put a couple of bullets there. We can certainly add more if we'd like to. I think the main sticking point there is going to be the cohort size expansion to sixth-year grader for the middle of high school. That is what will let them bring in the kids and run the schedule. I think I saw, I know there's an open letter in Hamilton-Wentham about the hybrid model. I think when you dig into some of the hybrids, if we're doing an analysis of program delivery, you're seeing statistics like 90 minutes in, on topic per week, per subject. I know that was also the stat that they were giving per day for instruction at the tri-town, which is Boxford, Middleton and Topsfield. And they're in three different directions over there. So I think when we start to look at hybrid, we want to make sure, and it's okay if we let go a little bit, but we want to make sure we're assessing how much instruction is really going to happen. And if instruction is, is still the key component of bringing kids into school. And we may legitimately decide that that is going to have to play a secondary role and just merely having them in the building and having some type of experience there is more important. That hasn't been our mode of operation up to this point. But when we do start to move to hybrid, I think we want to just be really honest about what that experience will be in terms of minutes in time on learning when they're in, when they're in the building. So staffing, I'm not going to, you've heard about it tonight. We've had a conversation almost at every meeting. We're going to have to staff up to make it happen. I think we just have to set a budget and live by it. That's why. I think we just have to set a budget and live by it. That's what I've got under um finances, but I think one thing that's really made me start thinking about this and, and starting to put some clear detail on what we'll need is answering the question about why can the Y have a program and we can't? Well, in a way, the Y is helping us have some sort of in-school opportunity, as crazy as that sounds. Because it's subdivided the task into two discrete things, right? They're just going to make sure the kids are safe and uh looked after and what the kids are doing during the day is being supplied by the remote teacher, because the kids are going to be there working on their remote learning. So I think if we try to do the push-in, what we might need to do is staff up to allow teachers to focus on the teaching and have someone else be there to assist with the student management concept. I think we could certainly agree that it's a good investment. If it brings kids back in, I think we ha, I, what we're going through right now with special ed will be an indicator as to what is the level of staff? What is the availability of willing people to come in and work? And would we be able to staff it? So we're looking at some of these staffing models. The one thing that we, I don't think we should open without is uh nurses and that could be a challenge for us coming forward. And bus monitors, again, it's really, are there people available to do these jobs? Um, so we can go back to implementation of safety guidelines and ensure that we are actually implementing them once we've put them in place. And then just the budget, tha- that's still there, the source of funding for the hybrid. There's no new information on grants. I, Avi, unless you heard something this afternoon. I don't, there's no federal package on the horizon. There's no additional state monies available. We've applied for everything that we have and the, everything that they have available to us and we're still hovering around the $650,000 incoming funds to support this. So this is just my stab at it. I'm happy to take additional pieces, take things off, add things, but this is just a jumping off point for conversation.
Can we talk about process on this because um it seems to me that there's some necessary meat that's needed on some of these um different indicators, you know, what is local tracing capacity look like? Like what is, what is, what is the what does that look like or what is the um?
Sure.
Yeah, um. And then there's also kind of some of these, you know, as you move uh, move things around, it may reduce costs. I mean, there's, there's triggers, right? Some things are going to increase costs and then if you can expand the cohort size, that may not, that might be budget neutral or do you know what I mean? Like there are things that are
I don't see anything that's budget neutral because everything's dependent on having staff be willing to work in person.
Right. I'm sorry. You're right.
Let me take willing off of it. It's able. We're talking about people that have either documented medical need. A qualification for an accommodation or can access the FF-CRA childcare component for at least 12 weeks. So
Is there a column that's needed here that comes with a cost? You know, health and safety, you know, I don't know about that, but there are things that like you could say, you know, when we talk about teachers, it's like, well, we usually budget 70K or something like that. So factors that we could factor into that. And I wondered if you, if you and Sarah could just talk about how we'll um hammer these out because there may be others that we didn't include here, but we want to have them ready for the 15th. And so that means there's work that has to happen between now and then.
So budget's pretty easy. I mean, it's probably oh gosh, I think it's, if we're covering a 12-week leave, it's somewhere between 15 and $20,000 depending on the level of uh replacement we're going to need. For example, typically we would hire a long-term sub at $185 a day. And I think if we work it through, it comes out to about $15,000 per covered leave. While you're paying full salary and benefits to the person on leave. Now the question's going to be, and I don't know the answer. I'm just putting it out there as a question. Will we be able to find someone for $185 a day? Or will we need a higher level of expertise, like for some of our specialized programs? Where we're going to have to go to a minimum of a B1 and M1, then that's going to push up the cost. That's where that $300,000 figure that I've been putting out there comes in. It's that 20% of staff that need to be replaced for 12 weeks at a minimum. So I guess a long way of saying budget numbers are easy. Broader categories that you'd like us to try to figure out some way to track would be helpful.
Can um Shannon and I work, I mean, I'm volunteering Shannon, but I'm just wondering if the finance subcommittee can work with you on this? I'm interested in helping work on this.
Yeah, is it a is it a finance question or is it a?
I think we can do more than just finance.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. We're all talented. Speak for yourself, Annie. I'm just a geek.
Well, I guess I'd ask the committee, what are the indicators that would supersede the, the financial issue?
Program delivery for me.
Yeah.
I, I'm especially concerned about um the, the hybrid at the elementary level and what that what that entails and really fleshing that out um because that was a main driver for me in, in my vote.
So then is, if it's programmed, then the program should be the focus.
I don't know if there, any of them are exclusive of the others. I mean, I, you know.
I guess my caution would be people are going to look at this as a scorecard and start checking things off once things are accomplished and feel like if, you know, we have a ma, is it a majority green or all green, we should go.
Um, you know, I'm thinking
How do you want to use this?
Well, I think I'm thinking more about sites a lot, you know, you and I have talked about that site selection, um, you know.
You notice that in here. That's what I
Yeah, I did. Yeah, it's not too original, Pam. Um.
Yeah.
But um, I think like, let's start from there and
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's uh take some feedback from the committee during the course of the week and then send, if we could send a draft out from a small group like early next week, does that sound like a plan? And then we bring it back to the committee on the fifth, sixth, whenever we meeting, whenever we meet again. I, I just
I think it's the 15th.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. Because not every
Finance Subcommittee.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could wait them if you wanted to.
Yeah.
And Annie, one, this is Ken. Um, one thing I think that'd be good, maybe we've covered is what's the scope of this when we talk about the move to hybrid, there's the K, the K through two, the K through three, K through five, middle, high school. So might also be good to have a couple of different frameworks for how to consider how much to bite off with each one.
I think if we um I just lost my train of thought. Um, I think this has to be pretty standard for most all of the phases except for the cohort size expansion. I mean, that's kind of, you know, its own piece for the middle and high school. But I think this needs to be pretty standard for all of the phases. No?
I, I agree. Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I see that Shannon and I'm, I'm also just thinking about how we scope and scale, much like what we're seeing. I think the report from Allison Collins on the, the students with the highest need, there are lessons to be learned from that that, that may influence how we do this and also the size of the next chunk to tackle.
I think I, I think I see where, I can't remember who said this, if, I don't know who said it, but um in terms of breaking it down into smaller more manageable chunks, because like for me to really wrap my brain around like if we were just, for example, if we were talking about just bringing back K to two, then we could look down here and we could really figure out how many bus monitors we need if we're only bringing back K to two. We could know exactly how many nurses we need, how many TAs, like it, so it would make it a little easier to wrap your brain around if we were just looking at each small group. So I think as we move through different grade levels and different phases, we're going to have to to break it down.
So you're going to need six bus monitors just about any configuration, because that's the number of different buses we run to hit the routes.
Okay, so we can work on this
Yeah.
adding columns and um
So I guess kind of like big picture for the committee level, like the committee does not need to worry about how many bus monitors we need. We can put a number on that for you. That, that's really easy. You need to tell us what you want i- in terms of decision-making tools. So if you want us to run numbers on, you know, it's, it's easy. It's $25,000 per classroom for a TA. You, you know, tha- that's not hard work. That's very quick and easy to put together a budget for this because we have it. We've been using it throughout the process. It's really, are these the things that you're looking at? Uh, do these things make sense to you in terms of things to consider for moving to the next level? Like some groups would just tell us, just do just the COVID numbers. And then make the rest work because that's a priority.
Well, I think that's happened in some other districts and then now they're finding that they can't make it work because they don't have the staff.
Right. So staffing is going to be the linchpin in making it all work. Unless you want a different type of experience from the hybrid. So we have been shooting for an integrated approach, hybrid and remote. So we're covered for not only the students who are in person a couple of days a week, but also the kids who are home a couple of days a week. So we're not saying that unless you're in person, you're not doing anything. We're saying everyone's fully active for the whole time. So learning, we're trying to deliver the whole program with both an in-person and a, an at-home component to it in case we ever have to shift to full remote again. Or we can come in fully hybrid, that the two schedules are completely aligned.
But don't you think um, I, I feel like we're trying to do the work right now and that's, I think that we should probably be doing the work offline, but I also wonder if I don't think anyone was particularly thrilled with hybrid.
Because the work isn't the technical work of putting together a budget. The work is identifying what you as a committee want to base your decisions on. So that's really big picture. That's not just that's not just two, that's all.
Yeah, and I, but I, but I think what we said was we would put out a draft, we'd get feedback from the committee. For uh
That needs to be done in public session.
Um. You can have a working group, right? That does something and then you could collect feedback. I mean, you're not making a decision, right? You can have, you can have feedback come through you.
Yep. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't want to have that be the thing that holds us back from getting this stuff together.
Okay.
I'm not trying to be a jerk about it. I just, I just think we're not going to solve the problem at 9:30.
Can I, can I share a thought on this though? What, one, I mean, this isn't going to solve the problem at 9:30 anyway, but so for me in order to feel confident moving forward and stuff, I, I know that the priority for me is to look at the program first and flesh out what those criteria are. Then we see if we can staff that. All of this has to be done within the health and safety parameters anyway. And then are we willing to pay for that? So to me, the, the, the driver right now is let's determine what the next, what the next step is. Who are we actually talking about? Are we talking about this for the entire district and one one list to use for each phase? Are we going to do it like Sarah said and, and chunk it out and kind of triage what's next? But I will say as a tool, I would like to have something that whatever all those checkboxes are, those are green. So that there's no question about, is it most of these? Is it some of these? Is it, is it half of these? Because then it's, well, which half? You know, which ones can we let go of? But as a tool, I would just want absolutely all of them green.
That's, that's the question I'm asking. Thank you.
I agree with Teresa and I also think we think about program first because we think about the kids first. And the program is really the experience that the children are having. And how can we provide the children with the best learning experience? So I don't, I think maybe when the working group is looking at this or Pam, if you're adding to it, if there should maybe be a few more bullets to beef up the program section. So we have a little more under that part because I do, I mean, obviously the health and safety part is why we're here. And then program is the, why, why we are on school committee, like what?
Yep.
We are looking at the educational experience of the children.
So you guys are basically saying that we're, 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 we are where we started. We just need a, a, a way to make it into a chart, which is in meeting the health and safety guidelines, which is the first priority, what does that allow us to deliver in terms of a program? And is it better suited to a hybrid format or an online format?
And if it's not better suited to an online format, then it's our job to now look at what will be better suited to a hybrid format because again, that has to be the goal of getting back in person.
So that begs the question, does that mean we are now sort of re-looking at the hybrid as it's been presented?
I hope so.
Yeah, perhaps.
Please.
So that's a bigger question because it's all pre-designed.
Yep. Yeah, but I also think that you're going to be, you'll start teaching on the 16th and you're going to see um you'll see opportunities and ways of doing things that perhaps you hadn't seen before. I, and maybe um
So please clarify for me, this is a, this is a huge, huge turn. Yeah, so what is it that you might all have in your minds at this?
No, but I think you, in this chart, it already says, you, we've already changed the hybrid because it has one general T for hybrid classroom to do student management while the teacher is teaching. And that wasn't in the original hybrid proposal.
That alone is a change that I'm in favor of because we're now not asking a teacher to be teaching in two separate mediums at the same time. Like that, that to me is a really big piece of progress.
Well, we are. We're just giving them an extra set of hands. So the teacher, the delivery model wouldn't necessarily change. There'd just be an extra person in there to help with keep your masks on. I've got to go to the bathroom and those types of things.
I think that's
The remote platform is still the primary delivery model.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think, you know, we're talking about this as an absolute and I think it's um the hybrid model is a theoretical model. I mean, we're sort of creating the boundaries and sort of creating the parameters, but once the teachers get in there, they can tweak it. And I think, I think we should all be flexible and open to that as the time progresses. Once people get into the classrooms, figure out what works, figure out what doesn't, see what might have worked in other districts, maybe what didn't work. So I think we have to be open to tweaking it and being able to adjust it when we finally get off the ground.
I'll be completely honest, I'm getting a little nervous about what tweaking it means and what we're sending out as a signal because if you're talking about what we were talking about like with Jen earlier and how many minutes of screen time someone's doing in a 45-minute block, that's tweakable. The organization of the school day, the hours of the school day, splitting school day between morning, in-person and afternoon remote isn't tweaking. That's a total reconstruction and a a total reconstruction of the contract and the work that we've been doing to this point to get people on board. So I just throw up the caution flag. We'll of course work through anything you want us to take a look at, but we are kind of on course with a set model. All of the PD has been designed to support that model. So if we drastically take a different turn, what we're looking at on this list are are technical obstacles to implementing, bringing kids back into the building. Right? Mostly hinging on the fact that will we have a high enough percentage of teachers? And will we be able to hire enough people to replace teachers we may lose to physically staff the building? That is the main obstacle that I'm seeing. So we can tweak around with the hybrid. We can make a total left turn. That problem is still likely going to present itself.
Okay, so it's getting kind of late and have we established that Shannon and Annie are willing to uh working group this a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, so if we could maybe leave it for there, I think we all have a lot to think about. We'll probably get some feedback on this. Um, and then we can come back at our next meeting and be really ready to discuss it some more. And then we can come back at our next meeting and be really ready to discuss it some more. I think that would be great.
Okay.
But the idea at our next meeting is to finalize all these indicators. Okay. Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Any other thoughts from school committee?
No.
Okay.
So do you need a motion to adjourn? Everybody good?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
We're not Ken.
Eric?
Yes.
Yes, I'm a yes.
Okay. Thanks all.
Thank you.
Great.